The December meeting, the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board. And apologize for being late. And ask Rob to give us an invocation.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank before a chance to be here to discuss the needs of our town, to be here in this great town with great citizens and fellow neighbors who care so much about the concerns and needs of our town. And we ask they bless us with inspired guidance that we can do what's right for the future and help to guide decisions as we get closer to finalizing our transportation plan and the other agenda items of the evening. Thus we say, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Thank you, Rob. So this is the first meeting where we've been graced by the presence of the mayor. It's also the first meeting in 16 years where I've been late, so that's really unfortunate. Sorry about that. So, the agenda before us, we've had a request to move one item so that we can address that more quickly. And that would be item 9A, I think. Courtney, is that right?
It is to actually move 9B towards the front of the agenda before the transportation plan update, since that's a lengthy update.
Okay. Thank you. Any other changes from your side?
No, sir.
Are we comfortable with the agenda with that moving up 9B ahead of 7?
Some will.
Okay.
Seven.
Okay, so adopt the agenda as changed. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Change has changed. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from November. Any further changes other than the ones that we saw from Marty today?
I move to approve the minutes of November 9th, 2017.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Thank you. So we're going to race ahead from item 4 to item 9B. Carrie.
All right, so moving ahead to item 9B. This is Hampton Place Towns. Type 1 preliminary subdivision plot and major site plan. So this is a development application that I will be giving the briefing report on. And then we also have the engineer here if you have any questions at the end for him as well. So to give some background on this project, it's the builder is Shannon Dua Homes and they're proposing a 49-unit, single-family attached or townhome development on about nine acres. It's located on the east side of Church Street between Downing Glen Drive and Tray Brook Drive. The zoning of this parcel is town center residential and the applications being made is for a type 1 preliminary subdivision plot and a major site plan. These are both administrative requests. So for some surrounding area information, as I mentioned, the parcel itself is zone town center residential. To the east, the parcel is also town center residential and it's vacant. To the south is another town center residentially zoned property that has a nursery on it. To the west is Church Street and to the north is a flex warehouse space that's zoned low-density As mentioned, the builder is Shannon Dua Homes. The site acreage after right-of-way dedication brings it down to about 6.5 acres. The future land use plan or town center plan designation is new supporting residential and the zoning district is town center residential. The proposed use is single-family attached dwellings, total of 49. There's just one phase proposed for the development. There are not any floodplains on the site, but there is riparian buffer on the site and some impacts are proposed for sewer line extension. And the parcel has already been incorporated and annexed into town limits. This table outlines some of the dimensional requirements for the development. And as you can see, all of the lot widths, required parking, density, tree preservation, all of those requirements are being met or are being exceeded. Also, some other dimensional requirements such as the setbacks, maximum building separation lot coverage are listed up here as well. So to get into some of the highlights of the project itself, I'm going to show you some images from the site plan just to go over some of the general site requirements. One of those is access. So as you can see, the main access is off of Church Street here. There's also three new local residential streets proposed within the development and those all meet the UDO requirements for local streets. There's sidewalk proposed on both sides of the streets. And then we also have some cross-access stubs to the surrounding properties. And you'll notice that the right-of-way is dedicated all the way through to the property line, but commonly the street and the sidewalk can't be constructed all the way to the property line until the other adjacent property develops. And so there are construction easements proposed to facilitate that future connection. And also, one of the conditions would be a payment in lieu fee for the construction of those portions of the sidewalk and streets that aren't being built all the way up to the property boundary. We also have improvements along Church Street required by the transportation plan. So this includes the center turn lane here, sidewalk on Church Street, a bike lane, and then also payment in lieu is proposed for half of the required 14-foot planted median on Church Street. One issue with the transportation kind of related topic is at the moment, the spacing of Lot 6, the driveway between the intersection here, isn't meeting the 40-foot spacing requirement, but the engineer has worked on revising the street alignment in order to get that 40 feet to be compliant. So it still needs to be reviewed by staff to verify that, but we believe that that issue can be overcome. And then just also a little bit of background that a TIA was not performed for this project because the number of units didn't trigger our UDO thresholds for a TIA. So the impacts for this project are unknown. Another improvement that's occurring along Church Street is that the overhead utility lines are going to be buried. Next, I have on here the landscape plan and all of the landscape requirements are compliant. This includes the street yard buffer along Church Street as well as the street yard buffer for the local streets, the perimeter buffers, and then also the landscape plan shows the areas for the proposed tree preservation. And then I've also included in here the lighting plan, which is compliant with our UDO requirements. You'll see that there's lighting proposed on Church Street at all of the different intersections within the development and also at the end of the streets where they dead-end. Those are going to be on gray fiberglass poles and their LED light fixtures. So this project is proposed, is required to have a payment in lieu for parkland dedication since the Parks and Rec master plan doesn't identify this area as park space. That came out to $2,857.14 per lot, which for the 49 lots totals, almost $140,000. I've also provided some information here on school impact, even though our UDO doesn't regulate schools, but it is interesting information to know. So using Wake County's student calculator estimator for the 49 single-family attached units, assuming a three-bedroom floor plan, that would generate 17 elementary school students, 11 middle school students, and nine high school students. And while we don't know for sure which schools they'd attend, using the school assignment calculator for this school year and using the Downing Glen neighborhood as a proxy location, the school assignments would be Cedar Fork Elementary School, West Carey Middle School, and Panther Creek High Schools. Right now, Cedar Fork and Panther Creek are both capped, and so the alternate overflow schools for Cedar Fork is Reedy Creek Elementary School and Morrisville Elementary School. And the overflow for Panther Creek is Green Hope High School. As mentioned, there are two application requests before you, the type 1 preliminary plat and the major site plan. These are both administrative requests, which means that if all of the UDO requirements are being met, then the application must be approved. And the planning and zoning board's role is to make a recommendation which will be forwarded to town council for the ultimate decision. So your options are to recommend approval of the applications as submitted, recommend approval of the applications with conditions in order to meet requirements of the UDO if you don't believe some standards are being met, or to recommend denial of the applications if there are some standards of the UDO that are not being met. The overall staff feels that this, these applications are consistent with adopted plans and comply with the UDO with the exception of that driveway spacing issue that I mentioned. So we do recommend approval of the two applications with some conditions. The first relates to resolving that driveway spacing issue, which, like I said, is in progress. Also, can payment in lieu for half of the planted median along Church Street be paid prior to construction plan approval, as well as payment in lieu for the portions of the street and sidewalk that won't be constructed up to the property boundary? And then finally, payment in lieu for, in lieu of the parkland dedication. So that's all I have for you. If you have any questions for me, I can take those. And if you have any more technical questions, the engineer is here too.
Thank you, Carrie. I don't need any comments on this one.
I'm not sure if this is technical or just general knowledge or what. Have two questions.
Sure.
First of all, there's a small open space, like three slides back or so, I think I saw it. Yeah. Where it says, "Common open space area."
Uh huh.
Is that big enough for like some swings or anything like that? Or is that being considered by the developers? I know it's not required by the UDO, but I'm just asking.
I think it's just proposed to be like a grassed open space around this overflow parking area. And yeah, you're right, we, instead of kind of amenity areas for single-family, that's in part why we have the parkland in lieu dedication instead. So it would be, you know, optional up to the developer. And the builder isn't here tonight, just the engineer, so I'm not sure if he can necessarily speak for, for the developer on that end, but we can certainly pass that comment along also that that would be something that would be favorable.
And the second thing I wanted to ask, it was hard to tell, or at least hard for me to tell from the submissions. I know it has to meet the UDO, so I'm sure it's done that with the standards, but the buildings, the townhouses, all seem very uniform. Like, there didn't seem to be a lot of variation, but maybe that was just my misunderstanding of the...
I can pull up the elevations here. My understanding is that they are all going to be like the same building. There won't be, you know, building A looks different from the building next to it. But while I'm getting to that page, you are correct that with our change in the subdivision classification between type 1 and type 2, if it had been a type 2, meaning the voluntary compliance with the design standards or guidelines, some of which relate to variability, then it would have been approved at the staff level and wouldn't go through the planning and zoning board and council process. If they choose not to comply with that, then, you know, it goes through this process regardless of what the design looks like. They do still need to meet the minimum requirement of the 18-inch finished floor elevation and of course, any height standards that the zoning district calls for. I think we just get, yeah, this side rear and front views here.
Now, this is going to be really close to that other subdivision that they've already started clearing on.
Correct, yeah, there's just one parcel, the nursery greenhouse parcel in between the two.
That's all.
Thanks.
So, I mean, the only question I have, I guess it's Urbana Drive, like where it extends over to that commercial property that's to this northwest of it or whatever?
Yep.
I mean, there's a stub there. Is there anticipated that that building will be torn down and, or is that just required to have that there no matter what?
We do require cross-access to all parcels. There is an opportunity to waive that depending on things like natural features, you know, or if there is a giant drop-off or stream that would just be extremely difficult to cross. Those might be situations where that would be waived. Or if, you know, potentially if there was a relatively new development that was just very unlikely it was ever going to be redeveloped in the future, but I think the thought is that this area is zone town center residential, not, you know, kind of like industrial type uses almost. So I think the thought is that that probably at some point will be redeveloped. I believe that the property was purchased, changed ownership about a year ago, so I mean, that tells me it's maybe not going to happen in the immediate future. But whenever it did develop, we would anticipate a connection being made there into the other neighborhood.
Are they going to sign those with things that say like future street connection?
Right, they are required to put a barricade at the end of the street that basically says, "Road subject to," you know, "continue" so that people, it's not a surprise when the road does eventually come.
Because they'll be surprised anyway, but that seems to always happen. I guess the only concern I have was we've got areas like where these things are sort of languished stubs for like years and years and years and never connect anything.
Right. Right. On the one hand, you don't want people to have an expectation that it's going to connect and then it never does, but on the other hand, there's always the people that don't want it to connect and then are surprised when it does connect. So I'm not sure if there's some...
We're going to have a big discussion about that later, so yeah.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that was the main, I just, that was sort of an interest question there for me.
Benny?
Carrie, can you go back to your slide two or three which shows a table of all the...
This one or the next one?
The next one. Yeah, and this one. This is net density, okay, so you are still within 6 to 8 with 7. What is the average lot size for each one of them?
I'm not sure if I have that information on hand, but, oops. Okay, so I'm not sure why this mouse is not being super cooperative here. But it appears, well, let me, oh, here. The about 2,500 square feet seems to be the, for the middle units and larger for the end units.
And how much is the footprint of the building out of 2,500?
Well, they're only allowed to have up to 70% impervious cover on the lot, but that would include, you know, the driveway, walkways, not just the footprint of the home. So I'm not sure what the dimensions of...
Approximately 1,800 or so approximately.
Yeah, I don't know.
Two-story building, it would be less than that, I would think. I mean, probably more like 800, 900, but...
Yeah. So these are 49 units, right? And I'm assuming each house will have at least two people. When three-bedroom, you're having three-bedroom houses, correct?
Right. That's what we assume for the, at least the student generator.
So when you have a three-bedroom house with 49 dwellings and you are calculating students, only 17 plus 11 plus 9, 37 students, it doesn't make calculations?
So we generate these numbers based on what Wake County provides us, and I think we've found in the past that this information hasn't been updated in a while, so we're working off of the best information that's available to us. And this is, yeah, what the school system uses to, to make their estimates.
So you're expecting nobody to have more than one kid, right? Approximately, or even less?
Well, you'll have some people that are young, that don't have kids yet, or that...
Yeah, no, but it's very, very, very optimistic.
Yeah, that may be, I mean, it may be.
And I would just add, this is important information to take into consideration, but again, it's, we don't have any requirements...
Right.
...based on it. So, you know, certainly good information to think about, but it's not something that we can really take into consideration when making a decision because it's not based off of a requirement.
The point I was coming to is school bus, okay? If you go back to the plan, yeah, this plan, and are you expecting the school buses to drive into the neighborhood or they will park on Church Street and everybody has to walk to Church Street?
That would be something that the school district would decide. That would not be something that we would typically get involved with.
Well, you only have one entrance, right? Right at this point, only one entrance to Church Street? And if you go into, I can read this, some of the lot numbers, but they are very far away. If a young kid from elementary school is trying to catch a bus, I don't, I don't know if any solution is to that or not, but...
The school district will decide based on the distance for the furthest kid going to the bus stop in that neighborhood of those who applied for that school. And so it's not something I don't think that we would take into account or even part of the planning process unless there's an impact that you're suggesting, I mean...
No, I'm not saying that this is not in compliance with your UDO or anything. I'm just trying to see the realistic picture of a homeowner. If somebody has a school kid, elementary school or middle school kid, and they are in one of the lots which is close to Stonewater Pond, and they have to walk their kid all the way to Church Street, it's...
I mean, there is sidewalk on all of the streets.
I can tell you, based on experience in our neighborhood, that the school will change this year to year. They used to not come through our neighborhood at all hardly, and now buses come through there. I mean, they, you know, it just depends, so they will...
And that distance...
They're going to do whatever they do, yeah.
But that distance wouldn't, wouldn't that be problematic, I don't think?
Sure. And my last question is, when, just above the Stonewater Pond, that buffer area you have, which is dotted, yeah, this one?
Yes.
Is there a way that you can, they can develop it as a green buffer that they can use it just for, not for play area, but some...
So, well, this area here is part of the riparian stream buffer, so that has to remain undisturbed unless they get permission from, you know, the state essentially. So any disturbance of that area would have to go through a certain process, plus the dotted area is the tree preservation area, which we wouldn't allow any trees to be removed from because that's required preservation area.
Is there, is it or not, I think remembering the last one we did, there's a greenway plan further back in the next property?
Correct.
So I guess in theory, this would connect through with these road stubs.
Correct.
All right, that's it. Thank you. Thanks, Benny. Rob?
No further questions?
Carrie, can you go back to, I think it was page two that has the dimensions on it? So they're proposing a lot width of 24 feet minimum. So the building size is going to be 24 feet?
Right.
So what width will the garage be?
Let me see if it was shown on...
I didn't see that.
These planes.
Where I'm headed with that is to think about parking and whether there's a truly a two-car width driveway or not. Because we know, we've seen some developments in Morrisville where they claim to have a two-car garage.
Right, and typically, in order, so we don't count the garage as required parking, but the driveway can count as parking. And typically, that's why we have for front-loaded buildings, a 20-foot setback to accommodate two cars in the driveway. For alley-loaded, for example, usually the setback is smaller because the garage isn't in the front. So they are proposing to use the driveways as parking, plus you saw there was two overflow spots for parking to meet the remaining parking requirement.
And the 20 feet is the length, but I was worried also about the width.
Yeah, I'm, you're right, this doesn't have a dimension on here.
Maybe the engineer can help us out with that.
Yeah, I don't, let me go back to the site plan sheet and see if that's labeled on
I didn't see it on the elevation pictures.
I mean, it looks like your typical one-and-a-half car garage.
Yeah. One-and-a-half. How many are you lucky?
One plus storage.
Given that a lot of people make it storage plus storage anyway.
So these lots are 24 feet in width and this is the driveway there, so I mean, it's a little bit hard to estimate, but it looks like that's about 3/4 of the width of the drive of the lot.
24, 3/4.
So I mean, the maximum driveway width allowed by the EDCM, the Engineering Design and Construction Manual, is 20 feet, so it wouldn't be able to exceed 20 feet in width per our standards. The minimum is 12 feet, so it wouldn't be any smaller than 12 feet.
If you maybe guess, I'd say it's 17 to 18, just looking at the elevation, but...
So that's reasonable. So that's a large reason why we get the 120 spaces that they're actually claiming, right? Which is more than the UDO requires.
Yeah, I think the, yes, that would make sense.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to double-check that. Now, a question for you, Carrie. What would happen if this had been a development of 51 units?
Mm-hmm.
How would that have come through the process?
It would have been the same. So right now, our type 1, type 2 distinction is not on number of units, it's based on whether there's voluntary compliance with the design guidelines or not. So it still would go through the same process as far as any other requirements, you know, it would just be increased by those two units, like the parking and whatnot. But from a TIA standpoint, I think we figured out that you would need 166 units before you would trigger the TIA threshold, so there wouldn't have been a difference there.
Okay. Thank you. And then, jumping around a bit, we talked a couple of meetings ago about greenway access. What would the greenway access be from this site? Is it possible, given the elevation?
So, let's go back here. The greenway plan shows kind of a general line following the creek here, and so it, nothing definitive has been designed yet, but based on some interest in the back parcel, what the Parks Department, Parks and Rec Department has been talking about is having it follow basically the stream beyond the outer zone 2 where disturbance, some amount of grading is permitted within the stream buffer on this back lot. So when this street, so when, if, whenever that lot develops, this street would be required to continue, first of all, so they can get access, but also because we have a public street connectivity requirement. So this development would be able to get access over the stream onto the greenway that would be built on the adjacent property. onto the greenway that would be built on the adjacent property.
So they would not be able to get.
They, they would get access.
Because the adjacent property would have to build the road and bridge or whatever across the stream, and therefore connect to the greenway eventually.
Right, and, and they would also be responsible for, for building the greenway.
Sorry, who would be responsible for?
Uh, whoever develops the adjacent parcel here.
Okay. So we're putting all the onus on some future developer?
Correct.
And the greenway is gonna be on the west side or the east side of the stream?
On the east side of the stream.
Oh. That's a surprise. I would have thought it would have been on the west side, but.
Um, I think that there was some discussion about that within the Parks and Recreation Department, um, and their preference was for it to be on the other side of the stream.
Okay, so it makes it more difficult for the residential to actually access the greenway.
I think once the street is built, then, yeah, I guess it would be a little bit further away, but I think the idea, I think, was that you'd have more of a natural area versus if it were built right along the back of this property, you know, it would be right up next to the residential versus kind of within this more wooded area. But you could also argue, once that gets developed, it's gonna look the same on the other side, too.
Right. So is this, is this set in stone in terms of like an actual Parks and Rec plan, where that developer knows we require a greenway on that side, isn't it?
Um, yeah, we've had some preliminary conversations with, um, people interested in this parcel, and that's been, um, that's been talked about, and it seems to be understood. But no application has been made yet, so, so as Peter mentioned, it, it's not definitive at this time. So the, the Parks and Recreation Plan does just show kind of a line in this general area. There, there's no specific alignment, which means that basically as development comes in, it kind of gets figured out along the way.
So it seems like maybe we should have a more definitive line going forward if now we're allowing this development to happen without the greenway attached on this side of the property, right?
So I'm gonna ask you to put that in your pocket, and when we get to the transportation plan, we can talk about it a little bit more, and that may be something we can talk, we can leave to the action section. So just kind of park it for a second, but it, it is kind of a fundamental flaw in our current plan. It doesn't state which side of a stream.
And with this particular development, other developments in the area, there were numerous discussions about needing to make a decision about which side of the stream it goes on because that would need to be continued all the way up and down.
And just to, um, to continue the comment that Benny had about the school bus, I, I think one of the reasons that school buses tend to go into neighborhoods now is because of safety, and we had a tragic instance on Morrisville Carpenter a few years ago because the school bus was actually on Morrisville Carpenter. So, um, sort of related to that, what's the possibility of something being developed on the other side of this, on the other side of Church Street from this development?
Um, let me pull up the map, let's see.
There's already something there. That's at Traybrook Apartments. And then the edge of Downing Glen, there's like a little buffer in between.
Right.
So this is this parcel right here. Downing Glen is over here. This is, yeah, Traybrook Apartments. The school is up here, so a lot of this side of the street is already built out.
But there's a lot, if I'm looking at the map correctly, behind where this proposed development is. Is that?
This one?
Yeah, is that?
Um, that's. Yeah, that's where, um, where the greenway would go, after, based on the decisions made in this project.
Just the greenway, there wouldn't be like houses put in.
Oh, no, um, the people that we've been talking to are interested in putting townhomes there also. It's, it's.
And on this one, or how do you get back there, kind of thing?
Right, yeah, you would need to go through, so this development was required to provide access to this one because otherwise there would be no way to get back there, so it would be by way of this street.
So if that bit was developed, these people would have the pleasure of all those, that, all that traffic going to the back of them, okay.
And all those school buses.
And along with school buses?
Yeah. So that's all we need, is more townhomes in Morrisville, yeah.
Well, remember, this is our town center area. Um, as you saw, there was very specific density requirements outlined there. Unlike some of our other districts, besides the maximum density, there was actually also a minimum density required.
Right. Okay. That was the end of my questions. Anybody else want to raise any other comments or discussion? So, we're pretty much hamstrung.
Exhausted.
But appreciate the opportunity to at least review it. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval with the four contingencies, or what do we call them exactly?
Conditions.
As stated.
One second. Any discussion of that motion? The motion is to recommend approval with the conditions. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, so moving on to the transportation plan update. This is a bit of a tag-team effort between Ben and I. I will be handling parts of it. And when it starts to become really technical, um, I'm gonna hand it over to him. Uh, it, it's a fairly lengthy presentation, and it's not so much to start feeding y'all a lot of information. It is to take all that information we've gathered today from the public, and then to bring back some answers to questions that this board either provided at the last meeting, provided at a meeting prior to that, or I did receive a couple of individual phone calls. And it's to answer some of those questions as well. And then we're gonna start deep diving into some of the really heavy topics and to make decisions so that we can get that information back to the consultant and bring you a draft revised plan as promised in February. This easily could take a while, so at any point, if you're really glazing over, you know, you may want to give the chair the glaze-over look, and then he'll know to take a break. But it's gonna be a fairly long process, so just bear with me, but I think it's gonna be a great outcome as a result.
So if I may, Courtney, the outcome that, that we should see, we'd like to see, would be presumably a thumbs up, thumbs down on some of those connections?
Correct, or it may, there may even be, you need additional information based off some information that I'm providing tonight. So, and that may very well happen, and that's fine as long as it's only on a finite few of the questions that I'm asking. We're not in a position to, in, walk away with way more questions than answers and, and still be able to meet this February date that we promised the public to bring back a draft plan. So, I kind of covered a fair amount of what we're going to do. And then at the very end, I'm just gonna talk a little bit more about some of the public input opportunities moving forward. And then if I didn't cover anything, that's your opportunity to start asking away. So really, I'm gonna go over first the requested information. And this, again, came from the board at the last meeting, some phone calls I received, as well as some kind of just leftover questions that we hadn't had an opportunity to answer. And one of those are, what were the key themes of the public input? And this specifically applies to the themes that we received in the portal and themes from the participants in the public comment session. We took a look at all of those comments and started categorizing them, and as a result, we developed really five major themes. Without much surprise, Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension, that was a theme. Morrisville Carpenter Road Widening Project, um, while not specifically related to the transportation plan, it was definitely a theme. Millicent Way Extension, Clements Drive, Green Drive Connection, and then overall, connectivity was kind of this reoccurring theme.
So, meaning, I mean, interrupt you, so, so most of these things are saying no to connectivity?
Not necessarily.
Connectivity is one of these themes, so I guess, which side are we looking at here?
Well, I'm just preparing, I'm gonna give you the general themes, and then we're gonna dig a little bit deeper because what you sometimes heard in the public setting was not necessarily 100% consistent, with the exception of one connection, was not 100% consistent with what we were getting on the portal. And I will say that, you know, sometimes the comments were about 50/50. Some, we received way more comments in one area, and I didn't go out and necessarily measure those. I will generally say which one we received more of. And the reason I didn't measure it, I mean, there were instances where we had a address submit 10 comments. You know, same theme, not in support of, and it just, kind of gauging it that way, there was really no great way to measure it. So the general questions we heard on the Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension is, you know, why is it included in the plan? You know, it was originally in a plan, it was pulled out in 2009, and suddenly it's back. You know, how did that happen? Some of the maps are just difficult to understand. You know, there wasn't consistency in some of the maps. You know, some maps had side paths, some maps had greenways, some maps had roads. Some projects were shown as constructed when they were really committed, and it created a lot of confusion along the way. So, next is the Preston neighborhood would be negatively impacted. If the road extension occurred, they are impacted. And then that impact only increased when we talked about extending 147. Um, there was also a comment that Crabtree Park, Crabtree Crossing Parkway functioned more like a residential street, not a commuter street. Specifically, no, the northern part of Crabtree Crossing doesn't have driveway cuts, it has road cuts, whereas the southern part has driveway cuts. And then, then currently Crabtree Crossing is unsafe. And this came through a variety, and that had to do with speeding, um, people not using turn signals. I mean, there was a variety of reasons, but current patterns of behavior create unsafe conditions out there. And then furthermore, you know, with current technology, it's always trying to find us the shortest route when we use Google and Waze. And they've, and the Preston community felt that was just gonna complicate matters if the extension came in. And we also heard that the connection was great for the town center. It's an opportunity for people to come visit, the new town center that the town's investing in. And then we also heard from some non-residential developments that extension would be great to getting people to those communities, or to those developments. I also heard from some other neighborhoods that they felt it was beneficial, you know? And, and really, this ended up being the great divide. The comments north, you know, on the north side of, you know, kind of where we are now heading north, thought it may be beneficial. And then, you know, the Preston residents south thought it was not going to be beneficial. So there was this interesting dividing line that came into play. And then there was a concern about damaging the Crabtree Creek Greenway that's currently under construction. It is currently under construction. Um, there is an east-west connector. There is a leg that is heading south, um, connecting the existing Crabtree Crossing where all the townhomes and apartments are located. There is not a leg coming north, it's not funded at this time. Um, it's not to say that there aren't gonna be requests right around the corner to ask for some funding for it, but at the time, we didn't have the easements to build there, and it wasn't included in the project. But I mean, I will say that if the road is extended, would some of it have to be removed? Yes. Would all of it have to be removed? No. That's not uncommon with any road construction. And then there was a concern, if we took it off of the map and somebody decided to develop along there, we've lost our ability to get the right-of-way secured. And then there was this, it's a much-needed north-south connection that's missing in the town. Again, I would say greater comments in opposition than in support of, which really echoed what we heard here in, in the chambers. Um, the next was the Morrisville Carpenter Road Project. And really, the, the general lack of understanding of what is proposed is what has led to confusion. And there's a concern of a loss of full-access intersections, and that is coming in play as they improve the road, and that would result in a decrease of response times. The next is the Millicent Way Connection. So this one's kind of all over the place. Um, this one here, it creates a safety issue by having it, it's increased crime, increased traffic. However, several thought it would be very beneficial for them to be able to get in and out of the neighborhood without heading to head to any of the major roads. And then some said, you know, road's not a great idea, but a greenway would be great. So there's kind of across the board on that one. And then theme four is the Clements Drive Connection. This is not, this is one where there's 100% oppositions to, there is no in support of. And the reasons behind it was there are alternatives already. For example, you can use International Drive in Southport, and the current roads just simply can't support additional cars. And they are very narrow without curb and gutter along most of those roads. And the last theme is connectivity. There needs more road connections, more green-gray connections, more pedestrian connections, more bicycle connections. And there was a general support from McCrimmon Parkway and Lewis Stevens, and explicitly stated more than once, it'd be great if we had more connections like this.
So is this saying we need more than we currently have, or we need more than they're on the plan?
It doesn't really get into that. Um, it was more like connections are great. And they didn't go into any, and that's why I couldn't capture them. Is that's why I couldn't kind of categorize them into anything else. And it really, there were some that were 100% focused on non-motorized connections, and some that were focused on motorized, but weren't specific to roads. So the next question is, I was asked, where is everybody providing comments? Where do they live? So we created a map, and this map is the only on the draft plan. So this is people who entered comments on the portal, um, and provided their address. So if they did not provide an address, you know, we couldn't exactly mark them. And then people who attended the public comment session.
So do we, we allowed comments for people who didn't identify where they live?
Yes. So, um, and then, we went through all that. We did have some that were completely out of the area on the map, so we don't have those in this view. And then we had two that provided, there's one address that's in Park West Village that goes to a, it's not a physical mailing, it's a mailing address, not a physical address, to, um, it's a little into a post office box that you can rent there. So we went ahead and added that because we used mailing, I mean, physical property addresses to kind of match. And then for the Prestonwood Country Club, they didn't give an address, they said Prestonwood Country Club, so we also placed a dot there, just on the country club. So there were two dots that we did add because we knew the general location of where they were. But they may not necessarily, in those two cases, have lived there, but they were representing an entity that had a mailing address out of there, or a physical location, like the country club. So then I have this question. So if I dial 911, my understanding is if I live on kind of this side near Town Hall, Morrisville responds. But if I'm in Morrisville Parkway area, the town of Cary responds.
That was a question that someone had?
That was plenty in the zoning board because they had residents ask those questions of them. So what I did was, I reached out to both our police and our fire departments. And this map here is the fire district's response map. And I'm going to caveat it and say how they respond is a complicated 15-page MS formula. But here are the basics. Depending on the type of call, it depends on who responds. So for example, if we are located in this building here, and I pick up the phone and say Town Hall's on fire, my address is 100 Town Hall Drive, they are going to dispatch, if the station next to us is available, that station, as well as the next closest one located in the town of Cary. So you're getting two fire responses, and this is through some mutual aid agreements that we have. On that, we were not tallying up all of Morrisville's fire engines at that point. If I get a medic call, it could be Wake County EMS, it could be Cary EMS, and then we have medics here as well, they're not EMS, they don't transport, but they respond to a scene as well. as well. So, it's really based off of this mutual, these mutual aid agreements, which this map shows our service areas, and then the type of call and who's available. They're going to get the closest available. So, for example, we got a call one time, I was looking at a map of places we responded to, and I saw we aided Bailey Fire Department. I live in North Raleigh, Bailey Fire Department is near 98. And I said, you went all the way to 98? Yes, we were the next available, you know, responder. So, it may not be uncommon to see an apex here, or, you know, Fuqua, or something, and it's just based off of this mutual aid response and who's available, but the short answer to the question is Morrisville should be the first one really arriving, you know, because that's the way it's set up. As for the police, police department is responsible for inside the corporate limits, you know, they're going to respond. But we could use assistance, for example, if there's, say, six patrol officers on duty and they happen to have 10 car accidents in the same time, you know, there may be some other mutual aid that will come into play, and some assistance with state troopers or Wake County or something along those lines. But that's kind of the basics, you know, if it's a Morrisville address, most likely Morrisville is the primary responder. I have also been asked for response times. This request didn't actually come out of this board, but it came out of town council. We are working on pulling that data together, and eventually I will bring back a map with that. But I can tell you, based off conversations that I've had with both the police and fire chief, new roads aren't going to improve response times, because it's, there's more to it than that, you know, but connectivity always helps. So, I mean, we can start pulling particular route numbers, so if we really start honing in, what is Crabtree Crossing, what is Millicent, what is Green Drive, what benefits, the fire department can start pulling specific numbers for us if a road existed, because they can create artificial roads and run some modeling. So, if we really want to dig into that, we can, but I think big global picture, if you think that's the only thing that can improve response times, and that's the only thing we should think about when adding new roads, that should not be the only thing that we think about, we need to look at kind of the big picture.
Was there any, if I can jump in there, were there any requests from the emergency departments, like, you know, they specifically would like to see this connection or that connection?
Well, there's an entire fire study that occurred. The fire chief will be presenting that to the town council at some point, first part of the year, we don't have the exact date. That was, that entire report didn't add new roads to help generate information. I'm gonna caveat that, they took the McCrimmon Extension that was under construction, said new land, it basically said with kind of the current road conditions, adding all this new development at current rates of growth, you know, what are the needs, you know, it's kind of basic. But again, any additional connection always helps, but it's definitely not going to be the only answer to improving response times if that's what we're trying to do, and I don't think this is what we're trying to do here, but just wanted to make that kind of clear. So, the next question I got, I was asked, is how many people live on the northern portion of Crabtree Crossing Parkway? And currently, if you are on Morrisville Parkway, and you head away from Preston and take a right, there's some apartments up that location, there's one way in for all the apartments and one way out. There's currently 436 residential units there, and using our current population data from the special census, there's over 900 residents that live out there. Just a number to take in consideration of another reason why it may be important to look into additional connectivity options. So, now I'm gonna delve a little further into some of these discussion topics. So, you may remember, I sent y'all some homework assignments. Really, I sent you a homework assignment, I should say, with two reminders. So, what I'm gonna delve into here is specific to the homework assignment. I'm gonna give a little bit of background of how the plan was developed. So, there are several recommended intersection improvements in the plan, and that was used by taking a look at the safety data, there's some town council and planning and zoning board work sessions, as well as the 2009 transportation plan. And then there was some prioritization. Again, that was based off of input from, you know, both boards, there was also some consultant recommendations, and then they took a look at some traffic volume entering the intersections. We're, in my opinion, it's a little unclear, and the plan is, it says improve these intersections, but doesn't really delve into what kind of improvements are needed. And to be honest, you have to look at each one and study it individually, you know, to really kind of state what it is, and if we were to run, you know, some type of modeling on an intersection today, and run it five years from now, we could end up with completely different answers. But I've listed there all the different types of improvements that in theory can occur. And I went on and kind of took the list that was in there. And really, what I need from everybody at this point is to really think about, you know, what are going to be our short-term, mid-term, or long-term. There doesn't have to be a ratio of how many you put into each category, it's what you think are important, so we can forward that recommendation on to the town council. You need to think about, is there any intersections that we are missing that just aren't included in here? And are any of the intersections in here simply shouldn't be included? And I did scrap, kind of strike out two of them, and the reason I did that is because they both are funded projects, so I didn't think it was necessary to put in the prioritization since money has already been allocated, you know, towards those projects. I can put them back in if you so desire, but I did take them out. So, if we want to just go through Davis Drive, Morrisville Carpenter Road, line by line, and really what I need you to say, whether it's short, mid, long, and what your, and that will answer the prioritization, and we can just kind of go through that way, and if you actually want to remove one, we can talk about that too, and at the end, we can talk about adding any that may be missing. So, Peter, I'm gonna kind of turn this over to you, if you kind of want to start facilitating this portion of the conversation, and then I will take some notes. I can even start typing in if you want, if it's helpful to see for a visual for y'all.
Okay. Why don't we do it this way? I'm gonna pull, of these, I think it's nine, if I counted correctly.
Yeah.
What would be your number one? In other words, short-term? Arlene?
Well, my number one would probably be...
If you need a moment to think, we'll...
Well, I didn't do it that way, I put short, medium, long.
Okay.
Go, go to somebody else.
I was hoping to end up with like a gold score, so we could...
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine. Lee?
I would say number one would be Davis and Morrisville Parkway. There's a severe need for a turn lane there.
I would say probably, I think the Evans Road is eventually turning into McCrimmon Parkway, right? That's the extension they're doing it?
There will be some improvements there, yes.
So, when they are doing it, so eventually, will that automatically be improved?
It should automatically be improved, do you know if there's gonna be any additional improvements that would be needed?
Kent wouldn't really be able to say at this time if any improvements would be needed other than after the McCrimmon Parkway. With the McCrimmon Parkway extension project, they did, our consultants did a traffic forecast and study at the very beginning of the project to determine what improvements would need to be done to that intersection, so they are making some significant improvements to that intersection as part of the project in order to address the impacts of the project.
So, will there be four lanes each way on all four roads at the intersection?
They're not widening Aviation Parkway, that, but that is being...
But that's another project.
DOT project, a separate project. But as far as intersection work, they're adding turn lanes. For one, one thing they're doing is they're actually gonna be adding a second left turn lane on what is southbound Aviation Parkway to turn onto Evans Road. So, there will be dual lefts off of Aviation onto Evans Road, and then they'll also be adding turn lanes on all the other quadrants as needed.
As part of the McCrimmon, or, okay. So, that'll even come in ahead of the, okay.
Morrisville Carpenter Road grade separation, we talked about that, that's, looks like to be a medium-range project, I would prefer that to be a short-term project, but that's not going to happen, but I don't know.
I'm sorry, which one intersection was that?
I'm talking of Morrisville Carpenter Road with a grade separation.
Oh, okay.
That is a long range, right? Is that medium or long-range project?
Well, I mean, if that's your number one priority, we can, we can talk about that.
Sure, I would say that's my number one priority.
Rob?
My number one would be Airport Boulevard and NC 54 grade separation.
So, I was leaving those out, I thought we were talking about the intersection improvement side, just kind of ignored those other separation projects, but...
Well, I mean, we can put them as, I mean, if they're number one and you want to put them in the short range, I mean, we can do that, and we can come back and have further conversations.
I know they're not the short-term plan, but, you know, considering I'm being asked, my opinion, I think it's, I think it should be, and should be the one.
That's, I mean, yours and mine are top priorities.
So, the McCrimmon and 54 grade separation, that's already funded, so it's not in this list, right?
It is 54, no, it is not in this list.
And that's because it's already funded?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, this project, which we both share about grade separation, are they not DOT projects?
But it's still important for prioritization, so it's not necessarily we are going to pay for these, you know, if you, this is about visioning, if you have a desire for the number one projects and prioritization, and then, when Ben is now, you know, sitting in Campo's office, and they're working on, you know, future prioritizations, funding, you know, he's able to pull this plan and confirm what the desire of the town is, and it helps support a lot of what he does.
Okay, sounds good. Arlene?
Okay, I got my numbers already.
Okay.
I actually put down for my number one, Aviation and Evans, because I figure when those apartments have, are filled with people, which they aren't right now, there's gonna be a screaming mass getting in and out of there.
But that's already in the planning, that's already in the plan, that's what...
That's why I felt was like, ooh, let's do something with that. We might need more than their planning.
No, it's in the process, because eventually, when they're going to connect this McCrimmon Parkway with Evans, they have to improve the intersection. So, you don't have to even ask for it, it's going to happen.
But don't forget, the other side of the street was also approved for residential...
No, we did not approve.
You know, and then if they put the same kind of apartment over there...
I think that was denied.
No, it was approved.
Approved. The reasoning was approved, there's not a slight plan, no.
Yeah, that's what's...
But it could, I think it's probably just a matter of time.
Well, my number one was, was different.
So, we all have numbers. That's probably what Rose would drive on.
Can we make five number-one projects?
High maintenance, my number ones are always gonna be high-dollar.
So, we got nine number ones, yeah. So, maybe that's not gonna work this way, so...
Yeah, we need to do, I think we should...
And I definitely sort of, I don't know that I approached it the same, I was sort of thinking that what we were looking at was these smaller intersection level improvements, and I, so I just kind of threw out the grade separations right off the bat, and I was really just thinking like, where are areas we can target, like a turn lane here or there, or whatever, was kind of what my thought of this whole particular assignment was, so that we may have done different things.
So, how about this then? I'm gonna say who wants the Davis and Morrisville Carpenter grade to be short-term? Raise your hand, and we'll start doing it, you know, that way, and majority will win, and then we'll go back and figure it out. Okay, so I saw three hands, so I'm gonna go with majority rules on that one, and then we can go back and talk about it.
You said Davis and Morrisville Parkway?
The first one.
Yes.
Or Morrisville Carpenter.
No, she's going for number one.
Davis and Morrisville Carpenter Road, the first one.
Okay, so, yeah, it's not, so, yeah, I think that's...
Okay.
That needs to be short-term, because of the number of accidents there.
But then, I mean, short of like straightening the road and doing whatever, I mean, like, what could we do to that? That's kind of my thought process, I mean, with...
Okay, so, and that's where you go in and do a further study, and that will, in your action items, and, which is the, you know, section five, part five, when you go into there, that's when we'll start talking about, you know, prioritize, but action items, specifically study Davis Drive, Morrisville Carpenter Road intersections, you know, determine what ways can we improve the current signalized intersection.
So, I think we're all agreed that's a short-term priority, right?
Okay.
Yep.
And then Davis Drive and Morrisville Parkway?
Short-term.
You want hands of short-term?
We'll start short-term, and if I don't see three hands, then we know we're heading in a different direction. Okay, and then NC 54 and Morrisville Parkway?
For short-term.
Short-term? Okay, it looks like you're...
But what's wrong with that, I mean, I guess, because I had a question on that, what's really wrong with that right now, that intersection?
It was just identified.
Right, I mean, so, I mean, so, I mean, I guess, you know, I, I might sort of like say, well, what's wrong with it? If we're gonna improve it, we need to identify that something wrong, I mean, and maybe there's a sort of popular thought that it's wrong, but is it really badly operating right now?
So, a lot of these intersect, so for the draft, these intersections were primarily identified a lot, mostly through the, through the model, and it, the consultants essentially did some extrapolation, looking at the volumes entering the intersection and the, and the B over C and level of service of the roadways on either side of the intersection, but I can also say from transportation impact analyses we've reviewed in the area over the last couple of years, Morrisville Parkway and NC 54 has been identified as being a low level of service. We have not really been able to, you know, the improvements for it are, are very large, and...
Right, and involves that whole road.
...be fixed by any one development or multiple developments, but we do know that there is an existing level of service delay issue there, both through the modeling work that's also done, and then also through previous transportation impact analyses.
I'll say the way I look at 54, most of these intersections with 54, the intersections themselves seem to be okay in terms of turn lanes and signals and things like that, but because no one can get south on 54...
Or you can only dump so much into 54 at this point, until you widen that road, that's kind of, yeah.
I don't think it's the intersection specifically that is a problem, it's 54 that's a problem, right? And so, I guess, I didn't, I didn't vote short-term because I felt like there's not much we can do about the intersection to make a benefit, you know, I guess it's...
About midterm then, where do we feel about that being a midterm?
That would be midterm for me.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, midterm is fine.
Okay, we're moving on to the next one, this is 54 and Northwest Cary Parkway. Short-term? Midterm?
Yeah, I don't see a short-term issue there.
Short-term.
I guess we're all conditioned by high traffic, so we use...
But again, I feel like that intersection is still performing better now than it did ever before Park West was in. I mean, as anybody who's lived here before Park West went in, and that was an absolute fail, and it turned around almost overnight, even though you added this massive development, I mean...
And I can say again, from reviewing TIA's and stuff, the 54, I think that, that, those legs work very well, there are some pretty heavy delays on the Cary Parkway sides of the intersection, and again, it's, it's similar to the Morrisville Parkway issue, it's related to turn lanes, that, you know, you have turning traffic and straight traffic that can't get out of each other's way.
Yeah, well, that's...
And especially when you go towards Cary on 54, then there is a bottleneck from four lanes goes to two lanes.
And no one stops at a yellow light, that sort of stuff.
Okay, so, we're gonna move on now to the Marshall Carpenter Road grade separation. Short?
My reason is short.
I'd say, I think you voted for that one already.
Yeah, yeah, we voted for it.
I would say never. Unless they give us a better alternative, I would say never. It would literally better to leave it as it is today, than to undergo what they have put upon us.
You put grade separation there, but there's a way that you could improve the intersection without doing grade separation.
So, do we want to add, so this is now getting into Morrisville Carpenter Road improvements and a Morrisville Carpenter Road grade separate, you know, intersection improvements or grade separation? So, we can add, you know, another line, you know, to this?
Well, the problem over there is a railroad intersection, the, even today or yesterday, I think, the one of the signal down was down, you know, so they blocked the whole traffic. So, if you have a... So if you have a grade separation, at least that problem will not be there.
Yeah, but.
There, I mean, there are other solutions, though.
Can we say no to Great Wall of Morrisville, call it something else?
One thing we talked about earlier is we may be shortsighted if we say no, but we certainly can say it's not our desired outcome, and this is our, what we refer to as.
I, I'd really like to separate, but.
Oh, I would love it to be separated.
Grade separation from the intersection improvement. What, what makes it so horrible and dangerous is that you've got the two things. You've got the railroad, you've also got that left and right traffic. So if we were to leave it as a at-grade crossing, but move all the left turns from this direction onto 54, move those up to Cotton Drive, that would, that would go a long way to improving that, that intersection.
And if people used Airport instead of Morrisville, instead of Morrisville Carpenter, and you had two lanes, and you had no railroad in the way, is that right?
I'll tell you a great thing that you could do at the intersection, make it a lot safer. It probably wouldn't cost a lot of money, is throw like two streetlights up at it.
Right.
Because people keep driving on the tracks when it's dark. I don't know why no one's ever done that yet, but, I mean, you've got a lot of metal there already, just put a streetlight on top of it.
So grade separation. I'm going to go back, short? No, medium?
No, never. Very, 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 very long.
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 It's 25-plus years, so.
Well, that's what it's going to be anyway.
And we can also just remove it from this list. We can remove the grade separation itself from this list.
Is that what you all want to do?
Well, the fact that we've tried the same thing.
Yeah.
I'm happy to facilitate whatever you would desire.
And, I mean, one thing you may want to consider is removing the grade separation from the list, but then putting in, replacing it with Morrisville Carpenter Road, NC 54 at-grade improvement.
I like that.
And then, and that's where we can look at moving one of the roads, moving turning movements, doing something like that without actually grade separation.
Sounds like good. I like that.
Okay. Do you want to call it at-grade intersection or just at-grade improvements?
Just the at-grade improvement.
And I'm guessing y'all would like this to be short-term?
Very short.
Which we are going to be doing some of this as part of the, the committed project, are we not?
No.
Are we not going to get any more, okay, that's right.
We are, we are stopping short of that intersection, because that would require us crossing over the railroad track.
So, but we are going to still have basically one long continuous right-turn lane essentially, though, there.
Yes, I believe.
One lane that turns from a travel lane into a right-turn lane, yeah.
And delete this one, correct?
I thought, well, if we, if we keep it in there, it demonstrates that we've at least thought about it.
Yeah, and just put that on there as a long-term.
And moving on now to the Davis Drive, McCrimmon Parkway.
I'd like to make that one a short one, because there, there's a particular issue, which actually Councilmember Shatish brought up some months ago. If you're traveling north on Davis, because of all that median work, folks coming out of, I think, the, maybe Airport Boulevard is okay. If you come out of that daycare center or the medical buildings, and you want to go south, you have to turn right and go north and do U-turn at the lights.
Gotcha.
And the way the lights are synchronized at the moment, if you're waiting to do a left turn, I think even if you get a left arrow, folks coming from McCrimmon can turn into the same pathway going south.
Probably have another jurisdiction for their poor connectivity problem.
But what happens is, everybody who wants to just turn left gets frustrated because they have to wait behind the people waiting to do a U-turn.
It's a very difficult, you know, oddly enough, when I want to head to, say, Harris Teeter, I go Airport, hang a right, so I don't even go, well, now they have a light, I may hit it. Then I go up until you can get into the median where they have the leftovers into Harris Teeter. I avoid that intersection because the cars fly.
Yep.
And that's, they can be very difficult to see, kind of both ways of my opinion. So I know I don't get a vote here, but if I could, I would go short-term as well, I suppose. But we have one vote for short-term. Do we have any other votes for short-term? Two, I have three, okay.
And I guess, all right, I'm just thinking about, so what would we do to that intersection, though?
Well, that's the luxury that we have, you know, we just say it needs to be improved.
That's what the experts are for.
Mess it up again.
Other than cutting, you know, other than the fact we're proving that doing this whole U-turn regime that the DOT loves so much now is totally false, you know, without cutting that in at, across from the iceplex or whatever, I mean, you really can't fix that.
I'm sure there's some way to improve turn movement, some signal changes probably at that intersection.
There are, there are several improvements that we've talked about with DOT over the, over the last few months that could be, that could help that intersection. Wouldn't necessarily fix all the issues, but there are some, some improvements they could do without actually changing any, any of the geometry.
Okay, so now we have Airport Boulevard and NC 54. And that is a grade separation.
Short.
Two short, three short. And Crabtree Crossing Parkway at Morrisville Parkway. There's a safety issue currently at that intersection for people heading southbound on Crabtree Crossing. You cannot see some cars on Morrisville Parkway. I know they're actually looking into some improvements right now to it, to address that.
What, to like raise the grade and make it more level there or something?
It's when they are coming down because of the overpass, or underpass, not the technical term there, but.
I would suggest, long-term, that we don't lose the easement right away. Keep it on 25-year plan. You never know, things will change later on.
So, okay, so, well, I have one long-term.
So is there, is the intersection itself improvements or not, but not the Parkway itself?
Yeah, basically connectivity is the same thing as the connectivity.
No, I think it's different. It's different, yes. This is the existing situation, where you've got 900 people from those apartments having trouble because they can't see what's coming out.
I got it, okay.
And I, I'll say on that, there are, there's other places on Morrisville Parkway that should also be looked at along that same vein, you know, Huntington Woods, coming out of that neighborhood. It's impossible to see traffic and know if you can turn without getting into the pedestrian lanes and with runners and joggers and.
Well, that's an epidemic all through town now.
It's, it's a, it's just all the curbs around Morrisville Parkway make it, make multiple intersections there. Very dangerous to make safe moves.
What are you supposed to do when, when the stop bar is 40 feet back from the actual road? And then there's a turn lane, like a Downing Glen now? I mean, are you supposed to stop and then stop and then stop again as you finally get up to where you can see? I mean, because.
A police officer, sorry.
But I mean, it's just, we've done this all over town all of a sudden in the last, like, year, where we've actually pushed these things back to where it's not even safe to go anymore.
So I'm hearing two things.
Yeah, that's, that's another curve.
No, well, no, I'm hearing one, that maybe an action item is to evaluate the curb cuts on Morrisville Parkway, because there may be some unsafe, you know, it could be line of sight, it could be tree, I mean, there's a variety of things. So take a look at all the intersections. Now, is it the entire length of Morrisville Parkway? Or is it between the bridge and Davis Drive, kind of in the residential section?
Well, even at Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center, even just turning right out of there sometimes, it's like, I agree.
I have a feeling it's multiple locations along there, both north and south. I don't have enough experience coming out of any of the Preston points to know if, if that's a problem. But on the northbound neighborhoods, the northern neighborhoods coming, you know, I definitely have experienced that multiple times.
Okay, so an action item, so it may not be able to be pulled in on this level, but an overall action item is to study the intersections along there, because several of them could be safer. So that's the first thing I heard. The second thing that I heard, and most likely have experienced, is the Town Hall Drive and Downing Glen Drive intersection.
And Downing Glen and Church. But I, I see that it's on there. It's because of they've added these striped crosswalks. And they've been, I know, and that's, I think, to improve pedestrian safety, but now it's, you're back behind trees now on all these roads, so it's like, you know.
And then I would say that those are intersection improvements. An intersection improvement can be cleaning up the line of sight, which is removal of trees. So when you are at that stop bar and you're looking left and to your right, you can actually see. Yeah, maybe that's the thing, to evaluate certain intersections because of tree, you know, or shrubs that are creating. So, I mean, you're coming up with some great action items from the plan. But I guess, do you want to hone in on Downing Glen and Town Hall Drive? Or, you know, are there other intersections along there?
I think it's one we've got experience with, but doesn't necessarily mean there aren't a lot of others. So I think it's a general statement.
Okay, and then we didn't quite answer Crabtree Crossing Parkway at Marshall Parkway. Was there a vote for short?
If you think it's a safety issue, then I think that should be short.
So I have one short? Any more shorts?
Again, a short.
Okay. And then Slidder Road and Carrington Mill Boulevard.
So I went out there to familiarize myself with the location, because I wasn't sure that I understood the intersection. And I drove around it twice, and I went, why is this on the list? You could throw an 18-wheeler around in here. But I mean, maybe I'm ignorant of something that has come up in other venues.
So some TIA's have flagged it.
Really?
Actually. You have an entire apartment complex under construction, several large office buildings under construction. So what you experienced today may not be bad, but once they're built out in two years, it's going to most likely need improvements based off of TIA's.
There's a significant amount of future development, both in close proximity to that intersection, but then not too terribly far away, that's going to impact that intersection. So we've had at least two TIA's now that have identified that intersection for improvements.
Because when I went out there the other day, I went.
But I mean, I'm looking at, I mean, there's three lanes in one direction, four lanes in another direction, four lanes and, I mean, you know, maybe it's an issue, I don't know.
Yeah, well, you have 4540 that was recently built.
There's a second building that will come in.
Associated with that.
I mean, and so, I, I guess in that case, then, why, why are they not improving that? Because when you've got like 20 neighborhoods, of course, each neighborhood has its tiny little piece of it, right? And so it makes a lot of sense for the town to take care of it. But when you've got like one giant development going in there, I mean.
Because there are proportional impacts of the intersection. So we are collecting TIA, some payment lieu, on a lot of it for their proportional impact. But there's not enough there to actually trigger it, if that makes sense. There will be, but you don't put it signals unless they're warranted. And it's not quite warranted yet.
Oh, so there's not even signals there? Okay, okay, well, that makes a difference. I could see a signal going in there. I assumed that there was a signal there already, so I'm, I'm wrong, then. Sorry.
So anybody want to put this in the short-term category?
Yeah, I could see that. If it doesn't have a signal there, then that would definitely.
Oh, this development's coming, yeah. Because there wasn't a signal there, but present conditions, I'm going, I don't know.
Okay, so is yours a yes for sure?
Yeah, I would say yes. I mean, there's, that is an awful lot of lanes there to not have any signalization. I have to see that would be a total free-for-all, yeah.
Okay, so what I have on there, I captured what you were talking about. So that's kind of the first point, and those changes can be made.
Well, no.
The second point is, take an overall look at Morrisville Parkway intersections. There's a lot of unsafe intersections at this point, so that would be an action item. And really, another action item is for the town to really start evaluating proactively a lot of their intersections to see if there are needed improvements. For example, Downing Glen and Town Hall Drive means simply removing trees may be beneficial to improving the safety of that intersection. Did I capture everything correctly?
I think so.
Okay, so we're going to move on. We're on discussion topic number two, which is the NC 147 alignment. As you may remember, last time, I think Ben probably talked about it a little bit. It's really an NC DOT project, but there is two alignments that were previously studied by Campo. Here are your two alignments. So the red alignment is a line that comes straight out of 147 into Town Hall Drive. The second one is the Davis Drive alignment with an extension to Town Hall Drive. So think of the green line as kind of a, I live in that area and I just want to hop on. Or I live in that area and I want to hop off. But most people aren't going to set a turn lane to turn left onto the green road to hop off 147. So it really is sending traffic onto Davis, which has the capacity, when built out, to handle it. So after our last meeting, there was a discussion in Town Council. So Town Council supports the Davis Drive alignment, and they actually directed staff to go ahead and revise the comp plan, of the draft comprehensive plan, to include only the Davis Drive alignment with the Little feeder road as part of the plan. And they specifically asked Campo to modify the 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan. So there's really no action needed on this one. This is just more of an update to this board, so you know that there is going to be a change from the current draft and why.
I like that. I, I was thinking that if it went to Davis, that we wouldn't get any connection to Town Hall. So that sort of is a best-of-borth-worlds type thing, I think.
Now.
On that, why does it not align with Little, Little Drive?
Yes, he can answer it. That's that technical kickpunting technique I have.
So this study that this fig, the study that this figure comes out of was done about three years ago now, two to three years ago. And at that time, the, what the study was looking at was to try and, for, for the two alignments, looking at alignment to Davis Drive that would make it as normal of a movement as possible. So the bigger point of this discussion is not that it would look like this. It's a, it's ultimately, the, the policy statement from the town is that we want to see it aligned to Davis Drive. Whether that's aligned across from Little, or as, or in this format, or some other format, I don't know that we as a town necessarily care so much, as long as the primary movement is not all the way down right into McCrimmon Parkway at Town Hall Drive.
Well, we do care, because Little will be extended onto, I think it's O'Kelly Chapel, and the, it's a big target.
They're doing that right now?
That intersection.
Yeah, they're doing that right now.
So, so that'll, that'll actually be some relief from Morrisville Carpenter or McCrimmon, because it's no east-west connection.
Right. And so some of the most recent discussions we've actually had with DOT on this project is, is looking more along the lines of aligning it with Little. Those discussions are very early right now, and there's not a clear, there's not a clear direction yet of, of what's going to work. But that's some that we are looking at. And so when you see in the, when the transportation plan, the revised draft comes back to you, you probably, you won't see this alignment. You probably will see something that looks more like a turn out to Little.
Okay.
Because that's most likely what is going to be the most feasible, because RTP does own a couple of large parcels right along Davis Drive there that are undeveloped, that they're trying, they want to develop in the future. And they have said in the past that they don't want any road that would cut any of those parcels. This would cut through, right, right through the middle of at least one, if not both, of those parcels.
Okay, well, that's good news. Thank you.
Would you like me to make sure our plan one step further shows the alignment with Little?
Personally, I would. I think that would be beneficial to the town.
Would the rest of the board like that?
Yes.
I mean, I think if people, you know, are confused, I mean, maybe rightly so, why, why have this be something different than what we think that we do? I mean, just invite someone being upset later.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead, send it with a Little, you know, drive alignment. It's not really a departure at all from what Council said. So I think we're all in consensus. So we, at least we have now one thing that's positive in the plan that we'll be moving forward, that we all are in agreement.
Very good. Maybe on that note, we should take a 10-minute break.
Okay.
While we're ahead.
Sounds good.
We'll do that. We'll recess for 10 minutes. Thank you.
Okay, so back to some residential projects. We have Wilson Place, which is a type one preliminary subdivision plat. And you may remember that you've seen Wilson Place before. Last December, the council approved a resolution to approve Wilson Place as a 63 lot, single-family detached development. It's located off of NC 54 between Northwest Cary Parkway and Wilson Road. It's highlighted here in red. So it's been approved, but the builder CalAtlantic is proposing to make some revisions to that original approval. And these consist of revisions to realign one of the local streets so that it now will connect into another development that's been approved, Sheldon Park. Remove one of the stormwater ponds because that's going to be shared with Sheldon Park's stormwater pond and essentially replace that with four additional lots to bring the total up to 67 lots. The zoning is conditional, high-density residential. And because the UDO has some thresholds for what constitutes a major or minor change, this would be a major change, which means that the approval has to go back through the original approval process, which was a type one subdivision, which requires planning and zoning board and town council review. But this is still an administrative request. So just to highlight some of those changes, on the left here was the original approval with the stormwater pond, four lots next to it, and the street connecting or going north. And on the right is the proposed revision, which now that this project to the north has been designed and is approved, this is the street alignment that would allow it to connect into that other development. And the stormwater pond for the other development was sized to accommodate part of the Wilson Place development, and so the proposal is to remove the stormwater pond and add four additional lots. For some surrounding property information, the property to the north of Sheldon Park Development is also zoned conditional, high-density residential. It's currently vacant, although it has approval for another single-family detached subdivision. There's also a vacant corridor commercial zoned parcel. To the west is another corridor commercial parcel that has a congregate living facility. And then there are some single-family detached homes also to the west that are zoned low-density residential, and there's one corridor commercial lot. And then to the east, this is Towne and Cary's jurisdiction. It has a transitional residential zoning. This parcel is actually part of the Wilson Place development. Its majority of it is in Morrisville's jurisdiction, but there is a portion on this parcel here that's in Cary's jurisdiction. And then to the south is Chapel Hill Road. After the right-of-way dedication, brings it down to about just under nine acres. As mentioned, the total number of lots in Morrisville is 67. When we include Towne and Cary, it brings it up to 86. There are two phases proposed as part of this development, and it's already been annexed into town limits. Here are the dimensional requirements for the subdivision. As you can see, the lot requirements are being met, as well as parking and density. So I'm going to highlight a few aspects of the site plan again, just focusing on the proposed changes here. So as far as the site access goes to these four new lots, it's from Flip Trail, which is a local street here. And there's now cross-access provided into Sheldon Park, the subdivision to the north. And that's via Baywind Drive. There's five-foot-wide sidewalks also proposed on both sides of Baywind Drive that would connect into Sheldon Park for pedestrian access. And there was not a traffic impact analysis conducted, wasn't required with the additional four lots. As far as landscaping, everything remained the same. However, there was an alternative landscape plan requested and approved for a portion of the street yard buffer along Chapel Hill Road. And the reason for this was to avoid conflict with the overhead power lines. And so instead, some only understory trees, so some smaller trees were proposed rather than shade trees for this highlighted portion here. Also, the lighting changed just a little bit because of the realignment of the road so that this corner could be properly lit. Those are still going to be on LED fixtures on gray fiberglass poles. And then the Parkland dedication, or Parkland in lieu of park, of dedication, sorry, payment in lieu of Parkland dedication fee has increased because of the four additional lots, so up from about $240,000 to $255,000. And then I'm providing the school impact information again for informational purposes. And so based on the calculator that we have from Wake County, originally there were 18 students, or elementary school students estimated for the development, and with the additional four lots, that goes up to 20 students. But the middle school and high school estimates remain unchanged with the additional four lots. And this was all based on using a three-bedroom, single-family detached example for 67 homes. As mentioned, this is a type one preliminary subdivision plat request. It's an administrative decision, meaning if all of the requirements of the UDO are met, the application must be approved, and your role is to make a recommendation to the town council. Your options are to approve the application as submitted, recommend, sorry, recommend approval as submitted, recommend approval with conditions to meet UDO requirements, or recommend denial if you believe that certain UDO requirements are not being met. Overall, staff recommends approval of the application because it's consistent with adopted plans and compliant with the UDO. Because we are changing a previous approval to the subdivision, the first five conditions were conditions that were included in the original resolution, so we've kept them here to be carried over because this action will be replacing the previous approval action. But the last two italicized conditions are new conditions, and those relate to the Parkland payment in lieu fee, as well as just incorporating the conditions from the conditional rezoning that occurred prior to the subdivision to make sure that those conditions get carried through, particularly that the architectural standards that were some of the requirements of the original conditional rezoning, that those get attached onto the subdivision for those four lots.
Thank you, Carrie. Could you just remind me, the stormwater pond went away?
Correct.
Because it was moved to the other development?
Correct.
Okay. And why were the power lines not buried along 54? Is that because it's a residential development, not a commercial?
So we still have a requirement regardless of the type of development, however, there's kind of two factors involved. One, it appears that on the original approval that it was not very clear that the overhead lines were proposed to remain, so it was approved previously showing those overhead lines. And we have talked about getting those buried still, but Duke Energy does have some policies that they've been changing, increasing the length minimum frontage requirement in order to bury the lines. And that is something we're having ongoing conversations with them about, but currently it's been difficult to get them to cooperate, I guess, with our requirements because they have their own minimum standards for when they feel it's feasible to do so. And this isn't meeting those minimum standards.
So even if the developer has to pay more, Duke is still saying they're not going to do it?
Correct.
The mighty Duke.
Would that have been the case if it was in there originally? Or is this only because it may have been avoided before?
I think it's probably a little bit of both, but I believe that Duke's requirements is 1,000 feet of frontage, which this development doesn't have. So I suspect that if this had been brought up earlier, they likely would have been saying the same thing. And I guess the end of the day is that this change was just focusing on these requirements, or sorry, the proposed changes with the four lots and the removal of the stormwater pond. And it was previously approved, as shown.
Yeah, so the previous approval, actually, I was reviewer, so the previous approval on all sheets except for one showed them underground. So when I reviewed it, I looked at the landscape plan, I looked at the site plan, of which it showed the utility poles on either side, but not, you know, throughout the development. So shame on me, I missed it on one sheet, which happened to be the demolition sheet. It really had no impact. At the end of the day, Duke is not allowing the developer to install it, even if the developer is willing to pay the cost. It is a significant issue that we are currently having with Duke. And to be honest, I told a person from Duke that I thought that they were, be the most difficult entity to work with, that they were worse than the railroad. I said, the railroad, the railroad will have a conversation, you give notes. So Carrie is handling it currently, my understanding, you can correct me if Michelle's done the research. They're requiring all applicants to go through the variance process, and Duke has to come and talk and explain why they're not going to allow it. So that's the Towne and Cary's approach right now. Michelle is undertaking, reaching out to Duke, and we're going to come up with a compromise of some sort. I recognize they have significant service lines that they don't want to go underground. We can have those conversations, but as it stands now, public safety finds that there's benefits, you know, ladder trucks and power lines don't mix. So, you know, when there's bad weather, a line goes down, police can't respond. So, so there are some potential issues with, from where we stand, kind of as town staff, and we are going to work to resolve. But in this particular instance, if Duke won't allow it, we don't really have the power at this point to make them do it, even though the developer would be willing to pay the cost.
So we're coming up with some alternatives right now to sit down and talk to Duke about, but we really just need to finalize a couple of conversations with the town attorney first to make sure that some of the things that we're proposing, you know, are doable. But we will be meeting with them soon, and we have police and fire both supporting us on it.
I wouldn't want to hold the developer hostage, but would it help in your discussions if we, if we said this doesn't comply, because it doesn't comply with our UDO?
And in this case, Duke Energy did submit a letter that kind of went above and beyond kind of what they would normally submit, talking about the difficulties in this area.
I have another project right now. They have an outstanding violation they've been trying to resolve. They contracted with Duke over a year ago to install light poles for their expansion. As of few weeks, they have two of three installed. Several months ago, I reached out to Duke, and I said, these people are being fined $100 a day per violation. That's $300 per, you know, is the fine, and, you know, does that matter? And their response is, we'll get there when we get there. So customer service from where I sat was not, I mean, from where I sat, it's a bit So Michelle's going to come up with a solution, I'm sure, counting on her to do it. I have every faith that she will, but just, you know, they're just honestly difficult.
So it would be grossly unfair then for us to hold this up because?
And the UDO, the UDO allows for the variance outside of what we have stated, as long as there's some sort of extreme situation that's already, I mean, the fact that they have sent us a letter, does that make it compliant?
No. I mean, we know that, you know, really in theory, they won't be in compliance. But, you know, are we going to call, require the developer to start going through hoop after hoop after hoop? Now, when we know that there may not end up being the same outcome, they're just now paying additional fees, having additional, you know, time dedicated to it, you know, it's almost like punishing the messenger, you know, if you will. It's certainly long conversations, you know, with Jason, and it's not that they don't want to, you know, I mean, that's not the issue. They would if they could. I mean, they have on other sites, so it's...
I'm guessing, you know, a CalAtlantic has a different sort of clout, maybe even a greater clout than the Towne and Morrisville.
Unfortunately, in this case, I don't think there is any difference with trying to get things accomplished.
And in the current ordinance, which will probably, you know, at some point be proposing some amendments, but there is some language that does refer to working with the utility company on, you know, the design and how they will be installed.
I mean, we come back to it, and at the end of the day, if one block, one small piece of frontage was doing a development that didn't qualify under Duke's purview of, you know, necessary and substantial enough to worry about, but the whole area was being redeveloped with a long enough frontage that did qualify, I mean, that would be a different response, would it not, from Duke?
Yeah, I mean, so you have the Preston Point, Preston Manor, the retirement facility next to it, they're into the same thing. They were supposed to install underground. Utility company said no. Well, if I measured their property all the way over kind of the frontage of this, there's only kind of, I think, two outlier parcels, if you will, I mean, that's well over 1,000 feet. You know, so we're going to get this, you're at 900 feet now, you're at 800 feet now, but when you start doing the math, you know, they are well over 1,000 feet. So it's frustrating. I mean, to be honest, it's frustrating.
I don't want to get too much into the different alternatives we'll be discussing, but one of the things we're trying to confirm with the town attorney is if PIL is an option, because oftentimes we have a number of developments along the same corridor. But there are different things that we're kind of noodling right now.
Who is the developer on the Sheldon Park? Like, if they're sharing a stormwater pond?
It's also CalAtlantic.
Yeah, so all the utilities internal to their site are all being buried. It's just the overhead utilities right along the existing ones, 154.
This might be a really moveable question. Can you go back to the LED lighting? I see where they're putting it, but I'm just wondering, this is sort of a little wiggly intersection there. Where was this? Should, would it be better for traffic if they had an LED lighting? I don't even know how to describe where it is. What would you say that is?
Here.
Southwest corner.
Here.
Yeah. I mean, I'm just thinking, that is kind of a little bit of a wonky intersection there, and I'm just wondering if there'd be enough light for those two?
You'd be wasting your light coverage potentially. I mean, they don't, this doesn't show the puddle, so...
Yeah, this one doesn't, but typically you, we, our requirement is for local streets that they be spaced every 400 to 600 feet and at the intersections. And so I think that typically one light is enough to cover the intersection.
Are there any further down south on Wilson that are just not shown on this drawing?
Let me get the full plan up.
I think so, on the corner.
Yeah, down, down there, right, nothing in the middle. Oh, there is one.
There is one.
Seventy-five and six.
Yeah, it is a little bit of a strange intersection, but it does meet the minimum spacing requirement for the intersection, I think is that exactly the minimum spacing? So there's one at the end of the street, this corner, this corner, this corner, that corner, and then halfway down the street.
I feel like, oh, well, is that, I don't know, that's a little...
This is...
Fair key. It seems like there is quite a bigger distance than there is on Royal Stock, between lights and intersection.
Yeah, and Royal Stock is the portion that's in Cary. This side over is in Cary, so it's possible that they may have different lighting requirements.
I don't suppose there'll be too many people there that don't live there, but still.
Any other comments? Me?
No.
Rob? I think we're ready for a motion then. Again, we're kind of constrained because it's administrative review.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the Wilson Place type one preliminary subdivision plat with the four extra, if you want to call it that, lots, taking into consideration the two conditions which were added to the original condition put by the planning and, uh, planning partner.
I was good to have a second for that motion?
Second.
So any discussion of the motion, which is to recommend approval with seven conditions, right?
All good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're approved. Thank you, Carrie. Thanks for staying. Courtney, maybe we should set a deadline? And also, what's the minimum that you'd like to achieve before we go home tonight? Set the bar as low as we can here.
Well, if we do not make it through this presentation, you will not get a plan in February.
Okay.
So...
That's a threat or a promise.
So that is the consequence of, I have some coffee, so I'm happy to share. I always have coffee in my purse, slightly enough. It's a guilty little habit I have. So I'm going to actually move some of this over to Ben Dow. He's going to cover kind of the next couple of slides, and then we'll move on from there.
Good evening. So we'll try and keep things moving on this one. Hopefully, the next couple of discussion topics may go fairly quickly. So we wanted to bring this to you. This is, this next discussion topic is talking about transit accommodations on roadways. And when we are, when we talk about it, especially in this context, we're really talking primarily about bus transit, and we're, we're looking at two different things. One is dedicated bus transit lanes, which would be for any bus transit, local service, regional service, commuter service. And then we're also looking at potential for bus rapid transit. And if you haven't been paying close attention to the Wake Transit Plan over the last couple of years, in the Wake Transit Plan, which is our 10-year vision plan for Wake County for transit, we do have several bus rapid transit lines that are in that 10-year vision. And Bus Rapid Transit, or BRT, is a high-quality bus-based transit system that delivers fast, comfortable, and cost-effective services at metro-level capacities. The biggest differences between bus rapid transit and what we would consider, or what we call local transit, is that bus rapid transit generally has shorter headways. In other words, you wait less time between buses. And then you also have, the buses are usually a little bit nicer, they're usually identified a little bit differently. And then you have off, off-board fare collection, so you're not having to pay your bus fares. You get on the bus, you pay, similar to Washington DC subway, you pay at a pay station before you ever get to the bus. And then if you're on the bus station, you've paid your fare and you just walk right on the bus. Also, a lot of bus rapid transit systems will have flat boarding, meaning you don't have to go up or down steps, you just step right off the platform onto the bus. And there's lots of different levels and classifications of bus rapid transit. But generally speaking, the Wake County Transit Plan does include bus rapid transit. The line that is closest to us technically, the bus rapid transit in the plan ends in downtown Cary. How? to us technically, the bus rapid transit in the plan ends in downtown Cary. However, it's very clear, and we've been discussing it with Wake Transit, and Wake Transit for quite a while, that that bus rapid transit line, the buses aren't just going to stop in Cary, turn around and go back. They're going to continue on up into RTP. They just, it just may not be bus rapid transit service. It may be more of a local or an express service from downtown Cary into RTP. To get from downtown Cary into RTP, you have to come through Morrisville. So, what we wanted to discuss with the Planning Zoning Board tonight is looking beyond the 10-year vision of the Wake Transit Plan, do we want, and our transportation plan is supposed to go out to 2040, so we are looking beyond the 10-year vision of the Wake Transit Plan, do we want to make sure we have accommodations in our transportation plan for potential transit accommodations on roadways? And the best way that we can do this in our plan is really to look at the roadway cross-sections. And really, what we're, what we've thought about is looking at the, at a few of the roads and looking at our four-lane boulevard cross-sections, and the potential to also have those cross-sections at a right-of-way width where you could fit six lanes inside of them. Our 2009 plan actually already does that. NC-54, McCrimmon Parkway, I know are two of the roads in our 2009 plan that have cross-sections where the right-of-way width is 124 feet or so, and it has both four-lane cross-sections within that width and six-lane cross-sections, but in the 2009 plan, it's, even the six-lane cross-sections are focused on cars. And this is, these are those two cross-sections that are from our 2009 plan. So the question in front of the board tonight that we want to just get the board's thoughts and a little bit of discussion on is, do we want to continue that, that thought process in the update with having some right-of-way widths for four-lane cross-sections where you could fit a six-lane roadway cross-section in, in that same right-of-way width, but instead of being for cars, potentially be for buses? And here we have what such a cross-section could look like, where you have either bus lanes in the center, which is, that, that's one of the ways some, some places do BRT, where they have the, they have one platform in the center and the buses pull up on either side of it, or even it would, or you could also have the buses, of course, on the, in the outside lanes, and whether that's BRT or local service. If it's local service, they're generally going to want to be closer to the outside where they can pull over and stop easily.
Is that realistic, what, to have a platform between those two buses?
Um...
I mean, and then have a support and a walkway to get over the road and down?
Yeah. It would probably be tight here. I think what you would find if, you know, taking this 124-foot right-of-way width, if you had a, if you had a right-of-way like that and you wanted to fit six lanes with the bus platform, you might, for the area where the bus platform is, you might not have the bike lanes. So, you know, you may go to just Sharrow's in that area, because bus platforms are going to be near intersections, because if they're in the center, you have, you need a crossing to get over to them. So if you remove that 12 feet of bike lane, and then remember with the median, you also have three feet of median curb and gutter, one and a half feet on each side, you could ostensibly get a 10-foot wide platform in the middle there and still have room for a bus lane on either side with the car. So, the, the, the image doesn't do it justice, and we'll, you know, certainly that's one of the things we would work on is, is having some good images in our, in our updated plan, but the idea is that we could make this work. And it's for us, for the town, the bigger, the question isn't so much about how you would get, fix, fit the bus infrastructure in there, it's more about, do we want to just make sure that we have some cross-sections for some of our roads where we think having dedicated bus lanes may be helpful? Do we want to have some cross-sections that would allow that and make it clear in our plan that that's, on these roads, we would, if it goes to six lanes, we want to see those two additional lanes be bus lanes versus general traffic lanes?
And so this, under that bottom one then, that basically those two outer lanes are reserved just for buses, under that regime?
Um, that, I mean, there, and there's a number of different ways you could do it. I mean, in the, you know, what we're thinking about, and for the highest level bus service, you'd want to reserve the lanes full-time for buses, but, I mean, certainly you could do, you know, certain times a day is bus-only lanes, that's been done throughout the country. Another thing that may be done that we've talked about with the Wake Transit Plan is, maybe you don't need a dedicated bus lane the whole length, but at intersections and areas surrounding intersections, you have what they would call jump lanes, where there are additional lanes that are only for the buses, allows them to get, get into a dedicated lane, jump around all the other traffic. They have their own signal, all the other traffic stops, the bus gets a run right through the intersection and jump ahead of all the traffic waiting to get through the intersection. So, having the wider rights-of-way that, that have the space built in to be able to put those additional lanes, just helps, helps to give you flexibility in the future for more bus service.
Is there any kind of a difference we need to consider versus, I guess, in having a, a one-way on a specific road and another way on a different road? Or would you, if you're going to do it, you're going to do it both directions on the same road all the time?
I, and that's where...
Or a circular versus a...
Yeah, generally speaking, at least in the Wake Transit Plan so far, the, the discussion has been more of having both directions on the same road. I think there probably are some areas in the country where they, they do transit one way on one road and the other way on the other road. I'm not, I'm not very familiar with that, and I don't, we haven't really discussed having that type of thing here in Wake County. I think the roads, if you look at the roads that are on this slide, these are more the major, major arteries, which is really where, especially BRT is going to be running on the major arteries, it's more likely they would be running both ways on the same road versus wanting to try and use one to go one way and the other to go the other. So, as you'll see on the slide, you know, what we're really asking for from the Planning Zoning Board is, what do you want to, you know, include in, a, a policy statement in the plan, you know, supporting expansion of bus service? I know we've talked a good bit about transit already with the plan, and we'll have some specific action steps and, and things in the plan related to transit. This would be more for looking at the roadway cross-sections. Do we want to have a, actually have a dedicated policy statement relating to the roadway cross-sections and transit, and say, you know, we're okay with the wider right-of-way width and, and the wider road if it's only for transit, or do we just want to make sure that we have some rights-of-way that are wide enough for transit accommodation, but not necessarily have a, a set policy statement on it?
Any thoughts?
Well, I mean, my thing would be, I think it'd be great to have some additional bus service, especially in Morrisville, where feasible, I guess that would be the phrase that I would want to throw in there, because it's not going to be feasible everywhere.
Right, and as we've discussed, I mean, we are getting bus service, and we're, we're getting some fairly substantial bus service for, for a town our size, but based on our location, we're getting some good bus service. This would be really looking beyond, for the most part, looking beyond the 10-year Wake Transit Plan, although, you know, there is a route in the 10-year plan, I think, that runs along a portion of NC-54, you know, so on that, would we, do we want to continue our standard from the 2009 plan where we have a cross-section that's wide enough where if we need, if we needed or wanted to add lanes to it, we could, or do we want to go with a narrower cross-section that may preclude additional transit-only lanes in the future?
I'd say it makes sense to put it in there. I mean...
Yeah.
Only because DOT is going to be doing who knows what to 54, and we may as well push as much as we can, because they're going to push us as much as they can.
Yeah.
I mean, they've proven time and time again that they're going to start throwing out these ridiculous, like, you know, opening salvos, whatever you want to call it, and I guess we need to have a ridiculous opening salvo to come right back at them, or at least try to take care of our, you know, our and the future inhabitants of Morrisville. I mean, thinking about, like you said, the 2040, I mean, that's, you know, 23 years from now, I mean, a lot can happen in 23 years. We are in the middle of the area, it's probably going to be more dense. It seems like if we're going to re-engineer a road, 54 would be the one to do it on.
Oh, yeah.
And to say, you know, since you're going to rebuild this whole thing anyway, do so with bus lanes as part of the, you know, long-term plan.
Yeah.
That goes, that's the most direct route into downtown Cary anyway, so... Right, yeah.
I'd agree with that. And I think in 23 years' time, it may very well not be a bus, it might be some other vehicle, but...
They'll be flying over the road by then, if they're saying...
But if, you know, if we don't, if we don't put it down as bus, then it's less defensible when we're arguing with developers.
Yeah. And, and that's, you know, especially where it comes to the right-of-way, that's where it's really important for us, is, that's how we get a lot of our right-of-way, is through dedication from development, and if we don't, you know, if we don't have a wide enough right-of-way in our plan, that, then that, you know, makes it that much tougher to try and retrofit something in the future. We say, oh, we're, now we're getting bus service, we need bus lanes, and...
Oops.
Yeah, you only have a six-foot right-of-way there. So, okay. And then, wanted also to just confirm that, you know, for these alternative cross-sections, the, you know, and looking at the Wake Transit Plan and, and the roads in town, and thinking about the, frankly, the most likely roads that would be used, the, these are the four that we as staff really are recommending, and just wanted to confirm with the board if, if those four look good, or if you are thinking that there may be others that would be good. You know, we've, we talked a little bit internally about Aviation Parkway, but the truth is, there's not, Aviation Parkway is already going to be constrained even with the DOT project, they're, they're already going to have, DOT is going to have to build a new bridge essentially across Lake Crabtree for, to get even four lanes across there, so it's unlikely Aviation Parkway could ever be widened to six lanes in the future, and if you think about where it goes...
It tends to be...
It goes to the airport, but if we had, if we allowed on Airport Boulevard, you still have that airport connection for bus, so. So that's why we didn't include Aviation Parkway, so.
Can't be a crab tree crossing Parkway in there? Make it six lanes one, like, they, sorry. Airport and 54 seem like the priorities there, in my opinion, when we look at it. Davis seems like a no-brainer if you want to connect, you know, from here to Apex, but I don't know if that's, you know...
Yeah.
That might be a secondary, you know, thought from a DOT perspective, right? Davis is going to be getting more, I mean, you think about the Wegmans is going in there, the other stuff there, there's stuff on the other side, that, I mean, it is going to be getting a little more dense. I mean, I can maybe see, I mean, and a lot of Davis already has plenty of room, at least north of Marshall Car, Carpenter.
Yeah, and if you recall, I mean, in our current, in the draft plan, we already recommend a six-lane cross-section for Davis Drive, because the model is showing that there's just going to be that much more traffic. So, that was part of the reason we had Davis Drive on there, is, you know, we already are saying Davis Drive is probably going to be six lanes, but also thinking about destinations, Davis Drive's an easy way to get into RTP, so.
So, if we say Davis Drive here, are we saying it would be Davis Drive as the suggested six-lane plus two for buses, taking out the median, or...
We could. Now, I think we as staff were not necessarily thinking that. We were thinking still six lanes, but, you know, maybe showing a cross-section where two of those six lanes are more for buses rather than regular vehicles.
And any extra land should be carved out of the Cary side, not the Morrisville side?
Of course. I mean, and I guess you're telling me, like, things are going to change, but if you did have this, if you did have the right-of-way, of course, you could always just say, all right, well, autonomous cars are a great thing, and they're going to take over, and buses are no longer a thing, but you still have the right-of-way.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, ready to move on? Okay, the next discussion topic is a Triangle Bike Way and potential accommodations for that. This is a little bit of a new and fast-breaking piece of infrastructure that has really only come up within the last six months or so, and some of you may have heard about it, some not. It's, it's, some of the Wake County, as a county, has been proposing, Sig, Count, Commissioner Sig Hutchinson has been one of the big proponents of this, and Wake County's currently preparing a plan and is looking at trying to designate essentially a route for the Triangle Bike Way. And the whole goal of the Bike Way would be that it's to connect Raleigh from roughly the Art Museum area over to RTP. And so currently, one of the routes that they're really looking at is running it adjacent to I-40, either in the I-40 corridor or directly adjacent to the I-40 corridor, roughly between Trenton Road, which is near Wade Avenue, and then up to Airport Boulevard, and that, it's a direct, and one of the, one of the biggest reasons they're looking at that is that it would be a direct connection, essentially would be an I-40 for bikes. So, you could, and I know Commissioner Hutchison, one thinks he said, is how great would it be to, you know, be riding your bike at 10 or 15 miles per hour down this nice greenway and look over and see cars on I-40 stopped, and you're just rolling on right through onto work. So, so that's sort of the vision. And with that, one, the, part of the discussion has, has come that it would, if it, based on the route that they're sort of looking at now, it would come up to Airport Boulevard, and at that point, they need to get it onto the south side of, onto the south side of I-40. So, the idea is that, you know, looking at maybe trying to cross over I-40 at Airport Boulevard, and then take roughly the Slater Road corridor into RTP, that would get you, that would get you to the current Regional Transit Center and that section of RTP, which would then, you could hop on a bus and get to other sections of RTP, or, or continue on. And ultimately, I think the, the goal would be that Bike Way would continue to expand and ultimately maybe even get into downtown Durham, but certainly with the Wake, Wake County's looking at their portion of it right now.
And we would connect on to this? Is that what the...
So the, not really connect on, but the, the question before us is really, do we want to, since we're, we're in the process of, of our plan update, do we want to include accommodations for the Triangle Bike Way on Slater Road and Airport Boulevard, which are the two roads in our jurisdiction that the Bike Way is most likely to utilize? And then, as we, I think, and I can't remember if we mentioned it to the, to this board, but I know at Town Council we've talked about adding in, and, and we're moving forward on that, adding in an action step to amend the transportation plan when the final Bike Way route is, is determined, so that we can make sure that our transportation plan matches and provides that. But we do have an opportunity now to go ahead and add in, revise some of the recommendations in the current plan to, to provide accommodations for the Bike Ra, for the Bike Way, specifically Slater and Airport Boulevard, and as you can see the decision tree here, you know, if, you know, yes, you do want to provide accommodations on Slater Road, we can look at a couple of different recommendations. One is increasing the right-of-way width for the road overall, with the recognition that, that, that increase in right-of-way would be for Bike Way, whether it's far off the road, adjacent to the road or whatnot, and then, or the other option would just be to go on and put a side path on Slater Road in our plan and say, that would be the Bike Way accommodation for Slater Road. And Airport Boulevard's the same way. Increase the right-of-way for Airport Boulevard, that would potentially allow for a completely off-road facility, or just put a bike, a side path on Airport Boulevard now, which would be, you know, still off-road, but, but maybe not as far off as, as it could be with a wider right-of-way. And one more piece of this, just so the board's aware, we, DOT is currently in the process of getting ready to replace Airport Boulevard interchange, and so staff has been in discussion with DOT about utilizing that interchange project to potentially go ahead and get some of these accommodations put in place now through the interchange project, so that it, it's the easiest way to do that while DOT is already going to be out there tearing, tearing things up. It's an easy time and relatively inexpensive to go on and get some of these accommodations added in. So we're actually going to be talking with council in January about that as well, so, but, and it'll all ultimately feed into this plan update, because our current plan recommends eight-foot-wide multi-use paths and bike lanes for Airport Boulevard.
So, you know, proceeding forth with some of these possibilities, does it mean we're just putting it into the plan?
Yes.
We're not making a commitment to build it ourselves?
Correct. At this point, it's just, really the idea is get it into the plan, so if land along either of these roads starts developing, we at least have something in the plan we can point to and say, you need to build the side path, or you need to build, you know, you need to dedicate more right-of-way.
So I think, I sense already that we're going to say yes to the first questions.
Correct.
Yeah.
And Airport, to me, definitely we should try and increase the right-of-way. I'm not sure... I'm not sure about what the constraints would be on Slater, but surely that would be preferred if it's possible.
I think increasing the right-of-way would be good for both of them.
Right. And I have a question. Can you, can you ride a, an electrically assisted bike on these Bike Ways?
That would be a question for the Wake County. I do not know at this point.
As long as your feet are moving, you're okay.
And I know that, I know some of the, um, I've actually talked to one of the, I think technically she's Cary resident, but she comes to a lot of Morseville things and she has one of those.
It was the one with the elf?
Yeah, the elf, that's a little bit, it has a, and it, a whole capsule around it. So you're actually inside by the solo bicycle with some electrical assistance. And that's one of the things that she did point out, which I wasn't, really had never thought about, is that because of that cover and encapsulation, she can't really get onto the greenways because she can't get through the bollards.
Right.
And then, of course, with the, you know, eight to 10-foot-wide greenway, you have a four-foot-wide, you know, bike machine coming at you. It could be a little bit frightening if you were trying to walk your dog down the greenway. But that's something I'm sure Wake County will look to address with the Bike Way. Would be, you know, how wide is the Bike Way ultimately going to be? And would something like that be allowed on it?
After, after the meeting, I, I saw the elf parked outside. I was quite intrigued, so I went home and I looked it up online. And according to the manufacturer, they say that they are allowed on, typically on greenways and Bike Ways. And one of the suggestions was that you use the electric motor when you're going to work in the morning so you don't get all sweaty. And then when you go home at night, you can use your pedal power and have a shower when you get home.
Or up the big hills.
Yes.
All right, so what we'll do, we'll, we'll work with our consultants and to make sure that we, on the recommendations, especially relating to Bike Way accommodations for Slater and Airport, and bringing back a recommendation with, you know, of what that cross-section could look like, right-of-way width and whatnot. And of course, there will be some action steps related into it too, since it's still a ongoing, um, project that's, that's still in the planning stages. Next up is Courtney to talk about the action plan.
So this one's actually going to be a pretty quick one. So right now, the actual plan really includes policy and program recommendations, near-term roadway improvements, and then near-term planning strategies for connected in on autonomous vehicles. Are they enough? There's no, there's near-term used in here versus short-term, which is used in other places. And it doesn't really break down some mid and long-term. Just remember last meeting, we spoke of a host of changes that we had asked that the consultant make. So really, at this point, I'm not going to ask you all for any specific changes, like we've done in some of the other ones. If you know there's some pressing action you want added, that's great. But really, Chapter Five, we're going to delve into when we bring the draft plan back and really hone in on that more, since I think it's going to look quite different the next time that we see it. I have some that we've already talked about tonight, but did you all have any other ones that you really want to talk about adding at this point? I'm going to say no, based off the faces, and I'm going to go to the next one. Okay, so no, so this is called Road Connectivity Enhancement Projects. As you may remember, there is a list in the, as well as a map, that were located in the draft plan. If you want to see what the map looks like, I'll just hope a little leak here, hopefully it won't mess anything up. But, oops, one button. So the map. I understood where all the connections are because I work here, but I'm willing to guess a lot of people had no idea where half these connections are because they didn't have road names. And I'm also going to tell you that in our current transportation plan, we don't have a separate map for these. They were just included in the final plan, which is probably the place where it has the most value. So the question that I really have for you is just confirm, I think, my very strong desire to remove this confusing map out of the plan and just make sure all the connections and extensions are included in the final overall map. And then my next question, are there any extensions that you would like added? And then we're going to go over some extensive modeling run that we did. I think, Mr. Taylor, you asked for a specific model run. And then based off of all the public comments, we actually ran a total of eight different scenarios. Or I should say, the consultant ran eight different scenarios. So how do you feel about this map?
I'd love to see some names on it.
Man, I'd go, okay.
But you were talking about eliminating this map.
I think it should be eliminated.
Eliminating it, okay.
But having the information still on the main plan.
It will be still, it'd just be with a plan that shows all improvements, not just these little ones, similar to what we currently have today.
Yes, on that map, will it be easy to see, these are the, the new roads being proposed in addition to the other markers and things that you want, that we're adding to? It'll all be there comprehensively?
It's, it's easy read in the current one.
Okay, yeah.
And I am fairly certain we'll be able to get to easy read. We may have to break out some stuff, but we won't have like 20 little maps that then build one large one, like we currently have in the draft. It'll be more akin to what we have in the adopted 2009 plan.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So I'm going to take that as my personal one for the night, so.
It's now one page, Turner? Two pages.
Okay, so the next is, here's our road list. Is there any particular roads that you want to add to it? For road extensions, are you content with the current list?
The only thing was the Little Drive extension, which isn't part of the Morseville anyway, but we kind of addressed that, so.
Okay.
Little Drive meaning the connection to 540 deal or?
Yes, yeah, 147 and 540.
Yeah, I'm sorry, 147.
Okay. Okay, then I'm going to move on to some of the modeling and really start breaking down some of our specific enhance- enhancements. So the first one on the list is Crabtree Crossing Extension. As you are aware, we did receive public comment on this particular extension. And as a result of, you know, one, Mr. Taylor's comments, as well as just the general public, who went through and ran a bunch of scenarios. They are sitting in front of you because I know it can be really difficult to read on here. We can kind of go through in detail, but what the two maps are, so on the screen, the one on the left, um, are simply just the volumes. Am I getting this correct? Okay, the volumes of traffic. The one on the right, just if you oversee calculation and two roads that are running very below capacity, below capacity, approaching capacity and above capacity. So we wanted to make sure that we were showing you the data that then went into the color coding on the right-hand map.
So what are the numbers means?
Which numbers? The numbers on the left-hand side?
Well, all over this, you know, it's got a number and then another in parentheses, it's higher.
Okay, I'm going to let him go through and explain some of it.
Okay, so on the map on your screen on the left that, um, has the, that has the larger, the round numbers on it. And in your packet, in your handouts, it would be the one that's stapled on top. So those numbers are volumes. And those are volumes that the regional travel demand model spits out. So that would be the number of cars utilizing any one road or road segment on here.
Per what period of time?
Um, it's, this is daily, so it'd be the daily value.
So all day, only 3,663 cars drive down Morseville Carpenter Road?
That is according to the model.
So do we have any actual data, wherever we've measured this, which I know we do, and does that correspond with what this model's putting out?
Um, our traffic counts are showing significantly more. The one thing that I, I need to double.
So you have to.
To double check.
Add those two numbers together, right?
Well, I don't, so yeah, what is the top and what is the bottom of those two?
AM and PM, Mr. President.
Yeah, so the, um, and I apologize for, that's one of the parts of the legend we left off. But generally speaking, yes, the, the number that's not in parentheses would be.
Morning.
Hold on one second.
Yeah, we need to definitely know, I mean.
It says morning in the key.
It says AM volume.
Yes.
It's not in parentheses and PM line.
Oh, down the line, okay, I got you.
So I'm sorry, it's not daily, this is the peak hour, or the peak hours.
Well, is it peak hours or is it?
It's peak, so AM volume and PM line would be your peak. It's just daily, you would have raw.
But, but when you say peak, is it a peak of one hour? This is the highest hour? Is this the three hours of this time, I mean?
With the model, the peak is usually run, I believe, as the, and I, it, I think it's the highest, it would be the highest one-hour peak period of the day.
We'll confirm and get back.
Yeah, we'll, we'll confirm that. It's either the highest, it's either peak one or two hours.
Either way, it's consistent.
That makes a little more sense.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
You can compare them consistently.
Well, I just, you know, I mean, if we're going to have, if we're going to make this decision on data, let's make decisions on data that we understand.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not.
I'm with you, yeah.
So, so the first area, the way that this was run is we took the existing road network that was out there today. We built Davis as if it was six-lane lanes and we had NC-54 as if it were four lanes, plus the Airport Boulevard extension and all committed projects. So this is kind of your dream, you know, build-out, if we will. Then we added Crabtree Crossing as well as NC-147 because that was one of the currents, concerns, is how was 147 impacting it? So you can see the results of this, you know, based off of that. We operate in most sections of the towns fairly decently with full build-out. Clearly, there are some exceptions along, you know, NC-54 here, you know, heading down this direction. That kind of gives you the general idea. If we move on to the other scenario, and this was getting at Mr. Taylor's question. Okay, so what if we have all of that plus 147, but no Crabtree Crossing? Does it change the colors on the map? Is really what this was going to. So I think the question, and if I'm putting words in your mouth, I apologize, is if we took, the concern was Crabtree Crossing was going to be this commuter route. You know, do we think it's going to based off of this? The num- the colors don't change having Crabtree Crossing in or out. That's not to say that people aren't going to use it. It, just in these modeling, comparing these, it, it has no impact to the overall region with regards to transportation.
Well, I mean, you can say that in two different ways. I mean, it also doesn't appear to have a huge negative impact on any of the roads that people.
No, I mean, it doesn't impact.
Perceive that it would.
It doesn't change anything positively or negatively.
Well, I would say that it, it changes some things positively. It, it changes the numbers, it does take traffic off of 54, it does take traffic off of the surrounding roads. I mean, the numbers do change.
I mean, there's, there's a change in numbers too. I mean, you go from 1,600 PM, what's that, 1,700 PM to 2278 PM by adding Crabtree Crossing Extension. That's on, on the southern portion of Town Hall where it meets Morseville Parkway, right? So you're talking about, um, 500, what is that? Almost, almost 30%, maybe 25% increase in traffic on Town Hall by itself with the additional 1,300 evening cars doing down the Crabtree Crossing Extension. But does it change it through Preston is, I think, what people are most concerned about? And we're really talking about.
And I can't see it on here, it's just multi-headed.
We're talking about a 20, 25% increase in Preston as a result, is what I see.
Right, but it's not really changing the service level from.
Right.
I mean, it's changing from a .12, I mean, it's changing it. One of these shows a .09 or .12. I mean, both are quite below capacity it's showing.
Right, I mean, we're not saying, we're not saying we're improving traffic by having it in there.
Right.
But we are also saying that it does increase traffic in the neighborhoods people are concerned about, right? Which is, I think, what some, what people were asking about is, you know.
Right, but.
What's the model saying, right?
Everything increases traffic.
Yeah, which we knew, right? Okay, that's, that's good.
But it's not doing though, I mean, it's not, I mean.
Not causing gridlock. It's not ruining.
It's not relieving gridlock.
As a useful, well, maybe not, but it does.
It is.
There's a lot of people who can drive every day that can avoid a gridlock situation using that road without impacting in a huge negative way to the people in the other sections of the road.
Right.
I mean, you can read data, you can read these numbers however you want to and you can make an argument a lot of different ways.
Correct. We just wanted to make sure everybody had the information.
But I think, yeah.
Before making any decisions.
I think it's false to say that somehow this is going to gridlock the entire neighborhood of Preston and people are not going to be able to leave their houses. That's just not an accurate statement.
I mean, there's an increase in the number of cars. However, it is still operating, you know, below the capacity of the road, so. But we're going to move on to some of the next ones. So the next scenario is we really started building off of Mr. Taylor's question as well as some of the questions from public comments. So we took the existing network plus committed projects for the town of Morseville only. And in this one, so we're saying, it's not the, what if we built out 54 to four lanes? What if we build out Davis to six lane? The airport improvement, all those are gone away. So what does it look like under that particular scenario with then adding 147 into the mix? And then, if you look at Scenario Four, it is this, you know, without 147 in there, you know, as well, but then the kind of the Crabtree Crossing. So we're starting to pull lots of different scenarios. And we could, and it may be worth your while to go home and read these and not necessarily go all over, and we can come back with questions. I mean, if you have small little things like this for the January meeting, I don't know that we'll get them in the draft plan, but there's the potential. Is you can go through and start reading the impact of the different scenarios. They're spelled out quite clearly what's modeled a little bit differently and then how we modeled things, you know, whether it was 25 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour, how many lanes, and it helps to kind of tell that story.
I think it's really interesting to look at Scenario Two, where you don't change the road. There's quite a bit of traffic on the section of Crabtree Crossing between Morseville Carpenter and Morseville Parkway, but there's hardly, there's hardly any change south of Morseville Parkway down to Cary Parkway compared to Scenario One.
Yeah, it's just.
You mean, you mean without?
Like, if you do nothing to 54 and you leave 54 at the gridlock that it is now, there's a significant increase over Scenario One on the new section of Crabtree Crossing that's not built and, and no difference in the area and through Preston between one and two.
Just understand that Scenario One was like the perfect build-out.
Right, right. What I'm saying is, right, so the absolute perfection doesn't, versus gridlock on 54, doesn't really make any change. It makes a change of a dozen cars or whatever, maybe a two dozen, on that section of Crabtree Crossing.
Gotcha. And then, let's see here, so Scenario Four, just to kind of highlight what this is. So this is Crabtree Crossing Parkway was quoted, going to get two lines, but this one has, does not have 147 at all. So let's just say 147 is completed off the table, but we build Crabtree Crossing, what happens to Crabtree Crossing? And so that's what this model is really kind of looking at. And then Scenario Number Four, again, is, you know, the, you know, current situation, you know, the existing network plus our committed projects, but no Crabtree Parking Extension and no 147. So we're not going to do any improvements from 147. We're not going to put Crabtree Crossing. This is just if the projects that are committed that are funded right now are built, what does it look like, is what this one's getting at. And if I'm speaking wrong on any of these, Ben, just correct me. And then Scenario Six, again, existing network, existing committed projects, no Crabtree Parking Extension. And then this is the 147 to Davis, so we wouldn't evaluate that. So basically have the feeder road to Davis and not just the 147 coming straight down to Town Hall Drive. And then this one here has Crabtree Crossing included in it. It's no Crabtree Crossing.
Well, it's showing on there, though.
Yeah, that's a typo.
It is, what, what is it supposed to be?
Scenario Six, does, does have Crabtree Crossing Extension.
We got these at 5:30, my apologies. We can get you cleaned up once. We'll email them to you. And then, scenario seven does not have Crabtree Crossing, but then has the Davis, um, connection from 147. And those are the models that we ran. Um, again, I mean, I think y'all made some excellent points, but we just wanted to run it a couple of different ways to see what, how 147, how full build out, you know, how Crabtree Crossing included, not included, what the impacts were. Um, so that we could then get to the decision points of, do we keep Crabtree Crossing? Do we modify Crabtree Crossing or, um, do we remove it altogether? And then ultimately, if you need us to bring us back additional information, we can do that as well.
And if, if I can interject, in talking, looking at these scenarios and, and talking with our consultants who created them, they're, they're most useful in looking at and comparing scenarios across each other. But really, what, what the, I guess, the, the final upshot, the big upshot of all these scenarios is, is that building Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension will increase traffic south of Morrisville Parkway on the existing section of Crabtree Crossing Parkway. Um, if you look through all the scenarios where Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension is built, it increases the traffic south of Morrisville Parkway by about 200 cars or so in the two peak hours, um, some, some a little bit more, some a little bit less.
We're talking about like 25%, right?
Yeah, it's, it, in, in most of them, it goes from around 350 to 400 without the extension to around 650 to 700 with, with the extension. Um, the other thing that these model runs show is that 147 is a traffic driver for traffic coming downtown Hall Drive and coming into Morrisville. The scenarios that have 147 included, that Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension segment does have a higher level of traffic, um, with 147 built versus without, by about two times. It's, it, it's gonna, Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension is gonna attract traffic no matter what.
Yeah.
With 147, it's gonna probably attract about two times more traffic than, than without 147. Um, and then this last scenario, seven, is probably the, the most different because that's when we had our consultants run, looking at if 147 went out to Davis Drive and just had a connector, um, between 147 and McCrimmon Parkway, but not as the primary movement. The one caveat I will say for, and it's actually scenario six and seven, um, the other one thing you have to keep in mind, this model, as we mentioned, for the model is a very blunt instrument and there's only so much it'll do with, regardless of what inputs you put in. But in these, in both of these, they put in 147 essentially coming into where it would turn onto that little drive alignment coming into Davis, it would drop down to 45 miles per hour because you, you wouldn't wanna tee into Davis at 65 miles per hour. Um, so with those, you know, and, and the legends are pretty clear about what the speed limits are, but with those speed limits, there's still a fairly significant amount of traffic that the model is showing continuing on into Morrisville, downtown Hall Drive, and then even down Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension. Although, you will, you can see, um, if you look at scenario two versus scenario six, it is a, um, it's a, it's slightly less on Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension when the primary movement of 147 is out to Davis versus down to McCrimmon. But, I mean, it, going back to the, the purpose of all this modeling is to confirm that, you know, I mean, I think it shows that it, Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension is gonna be an attractor for traffic. Um, and it will, according to the modeling, now, modeling's not, you know, then it'll be all, and not perfect, but according to the modeling, which is best information we have, it will increase traffic in Preston.
And, and what I'm looking at is, you look at six and seven, they're both consider existing committed projects, right? One has Crabtree Crossing Parkway, one doesn't. They both use Davis Drive as the connector, right? So, even taking, taking 147 out of the equation, um, and you look at the difference in Preston, it's 694 in the evening peak versus 1,036 in the, uh, in the evening peak with Crabtree, Crabtree Crossing Extension. That's about a 50, a 45, 50% increase in traffic in Preston. And that's with no 147 connection, just having the Crabtree Crossing Parkway Extension there. Um, and I think that's what people, that's where the concern is, right?
But I, my concern is the 25,000 people in Morrisville that don't live in Preston and that.
No, I get that.
Wherever else. And so, I think we need to balance that. I mean, traffic is gonna go up. That, is, is our whole purpose in life to protect Preston from all bad things ever happening to them? No, I don't believe that that's the case. I, I mean, you, you'd make, you can make the numbers sound a lot worse. I mean, you're, you know, oh, it's 50% more, but it's 300 cars more. I mean, you're not talking about thousands of cars, which is what the fear is that is gonna happen. And, and I think these numbers, you can, you can look at them either way. I mean.
I mean, my role is to make sure that y'all are making informed decisions.
Right, yeah. I'd like to see this, well, I mean, I'm, if y'all don't do it, I'm gonna have a gra, I'm gonna make a graph or something of all the different numbers and the different, just so we can compare the numbers. I mean, cause you can look at this and you, you know, you click through. I'm gonna try to compare some key numbers to actually see them all together.
Well, and I, I think the other thing to remember too is that the model and, and the numbers that come out of the model and the information that comes out of the model is, should, should and is only one piece of information. There's, you know, when talking about all these different projects, um, we are, you know, we're talking about a long range plan, as we mentioned earlier tonight, you know, we're, we're looking out 23 years. This is one piece of information, but there's other considerations we've talked about even tonight that I think, you know, you need to be cognizant of when, when going through and thinking about this plan is not just the, the amount of traffic, but, you know, other general connectivity, emergency services and other considerations we mentioned, you know, tonight and other nights too. So, um, don't, certainly don't discount this information, but there's, there's, this is one piece of a broader pie.
And, and if connectivity is the goal here, we can also go, um, and start looking at what are some other connection points? You know, this is not just the only one. I mean, the reality is the town does, it goes through the middle of a park, you know, Morrisville Community Park, but you can connect Cudre to the Morrisville Community Park, um, shorten the park space, but that is another connection. I mean, that's, I mean, so we can start talking about.
Yeah, that would be.
Other alternatives, you know, so they all have pros and cons, but I think we need to put them on the list. I mean, so there is a connection through Preston Creekside, which can connect into some neighborhoods in the south, but then we are cutting through the middle of a golf course. Um, but there are other connection opportunities that we can start talking about.
Yeah, I mean, see, to me, there's only one of these connections that was voted on by 89% of the town of Morrisville and that's Crabtree Crossing. There's only one of these connections that actually makes Crabtree Crossing cross Crabtree Creek and that's Crabtree Crossing. I mean, there's a lot of precedent for this road going back a long time. Uh, I mean, that, you know, to me, that is a pretty large, you know, stack in its favor as well.
Well, I think anything that connects from Morrisville Carpenter over to Morrisville Parkway, they're gonna hit Preston anyway because, okay, you bring it down the road a little bit, but they're, you know, set on going to Cary Parkway, they're gonna cut through there anyway, you know? So, it's not, it might not be whammed just right there that the, the extension happens, but any kind of connection, I think, is going to cause more traffic through Preston because people are gonna cut through to Cary Parkway.
It's just.
Makes the most sense.
Whether it's ideal, least ideal.
Right, right, right.
Driving, you know, certain patterns of behavior. There's a lot of factors that will go into that. Um, the planning department's not going to advocate one way or the other.
I don't think it's a good idea to cut through parks and golf courses.
But we need to be realistic that, you know, there are other options and that just, they all have pros and cons. Um, but if this one connection is a concern, do we need to start evaluating others as well? Or do we not evaluate any others at all? I mean, the, I don't know if those questions are for me to necessarily answer. I just wanna make sure y'all have all the facts so that you can make an informed decision.
In, in that vein, I'd like to go back to Lee's point, and I heard both Lee and I heard also Ben. I think it would be very useful to be able to compare these, you know.
Summarize the comparison.
Yeah. Um, and then, I heard your point too. It's a model and models don't take necessarily into account real life. And we heard certainly that the technology has changed, that people use Google Maps and Waze and find shortcuts that a model might not necessarily promote, so. But I, I think I would like that summary of that information.
Okay, so go ahead and summarize these scenarios here.
Yes.
With some of those concerning traffic points in mind.
Yeah.
In, in a table format, yeah.
Cause I, I think, you know, running these scenarios is great, but very, very useful.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was hoping to see, so thank you for getting this done.
We can bring that back to you at the next meeting. Um, is there any other information that you want us to bring back for the next meeting, um, specific to Crabtree Crossing?
You're, you're gonna bring back a little bit more on the emergency response, aren't you?
Um, I'm working on the data of trying to put together for both police as well as fire, identifying the spots that there are slower responses in town, um, trying to prepare them out. But when do we meet the benchmarks? When do we not meet the benchmarks? Um, for fire, most likely, we won't include the rural areas, not really rural RTB.
Right.
But, you know, because they never make the benchmark because they're so far away potentially, um, but we're working on it and so we'll make sure we have that as well.
And why is it that the evening commute numbers are always higher? Is it just that it's more compressed rather than in the mornings, just spread out?
Sometimes we run late, we have conference appointments, but we all leave at 5 o'clock. I don't know if that's really factually why it happens, but that's my, my gut. I mean, a lot of people take their trips to school and there's, you know, different hours for that. Okay, moving on to, um, Markham Drive. So, we did not receive any public comments on this connection. Um, it's actually included in part of Wait Tech's current design. Um, the portion kind of between Watkins and Paramount. Um, so, question is, do you wanna keep it, modify it or remove it from the plan? Or do you need additional information?
Keep it.
Yeah.
Keep it.
Okay.
That was such an easy one. Oh, thank you.
Uh, the next one is Foxglove Drive. So, Foxglove did not receive any public comments. It's currently an extension included in DFI's Town Center Plan. Um, so the question is, keep, modify, remove or bring more information?
Keep.
Yeah, I would say you need, yeah, that goes right by the library, the new library to Jeremiah, is that?
Yeah.
Um, it's right in that vicinity.
Yeah.
It won't actually touch the library, but it is in the vicinity.
But I mean, it's kind of near that same corner, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, the next one is the Carolina Street Extension. We received no public comments. Um, this too is in the DFI's Town Center Plan and the town is, has funded and will be constructing a portion of the road as well as a roundabout. So, same questions, keep, remove, modify or additional information?
I mean, it's under, in the works, unless we can just get rid of the roundabout, I mean, yeah.
Chicken.
Roundabouts are good.
I mean, I, it's not great, roundabouts are not good for pedestrians to walk across and you're cutting the road from four lanes to one, but I mean, you know, whatever, or to two.
So, we're gonna move on. So, the next is International Drive. Um, we received no comments on this and a portion of it is actually included in Morrisville Solid Waste Transfer Station's current design. Same questions.
Keep.
Yeah.
Keep.
That would be a good connection.
That'd be a great connection. Okay. Southport Drive Extension, again, no public comments. It's actually included in the bid package for McCrimmon Parkway Phase Two. Cannot guarantee that means it'll be constructed, but I can tell you it's in a big, big package. Um, would you like to keep, modify or remove or bring back additional information?
I'd say keep.
Um, next is Green Drive. Um, so this is the one where we received zero in support of keeping it, um, but we did receive comments. So, a little bit of history I'm gonna give on this one. So, there is a recorded easement that connects the two. Um, the easement is four feet wide on one portion and it's a six-foot strip owned by the town. Not sure exactly what that means, but I'm gonna say that we own six feet on one side and we have the right to use four feet on the other side. Um, that is not wide enough to accommodate, um, a road or a greenway. Um, and then, whoops, yeah, that's the right one. So, kind of the question is, do you wanna keep, modify or remove, um, this one or bring back any additional information?
My thing would be to remove it. I went, I went driving out there to see what the deal was and I went, wait a minute, we got international going to Southport, going to Chapel Hill, why do we need this? You know? I just don't think it's necessary, but that's me.
I think I would remove it and, you know, if that area ever gets redeveloped, then that could change.
It most likely, there could be a connection that occurs in another spot. Um, since there is, you know, a fair amount of land here, you know, that could be redeveloped and connect up somehow. There's, there's opportunities elsewhere with this one?
Yeah, I mean, cause it looks like Fairview, although I don't know what all is on that, but it could come through, but.
My main concern with not keeping it in there is the redevelopment at separate times.
Yeah.
Uh, in a way that makes it so that each redevelopment has no ability to have dual connectivity, you know?
Well, we require stubs for our new developments. So, there is a possibility.
So, can't, but can we still say you have to have a stub and here's where you have to have it?
So, it, it happens a little more organically now. So, it's stubbed to the adjacent property. So, for example, and this is probably not the best of early年的area. We've looked at some development sites actually for this area and they come in here and then they pop up right here to Fairview. So, that's actually gonna start creating your connection. Say a couple of these lots are potentially put together and now sold and developed, we may cut another, you know, road up through there as well. Um, you know, we, we've talked long about this one. I know when the resolution went through with council, um, yeah. I always have reservations removing, um, any connections, cause ultimately what's one house now will become four homes. It's just the way that it works around here. So, why we may have 50 out homes out there, now do we suddenly have 150 homes out there with one point of access? That worries me as a general rule.
And that's, that's exactly what, what my concern is with removing it. We're not saying we're going to come in and build a road between your neighborhoods. We're not gonna tear down your house and put a road here because we want one here. We're saying, you know, you can't do a mass redevelopment without considering this connectivity option.
That would be correct. If somebody came through, tear down that end, we would cry then to start putting the stub in.
Yeah, I mean, I kinda agree with that, although that'd be a pretty difficult assemblage, but I guess money talks, you never know.
I, I'm being, for Clement's Drive, which is this connection here, more than 50, on the right-hand side, a big portion of it's under one owner. They're subdividing out on the left-hand side of the road, you know, kind of the southwest. It's all owned by the Hindu Temple Society of North Carolina. So, I think ultimately another connection will come in through another phase that they have. They're going to ultimately end up having to connect out up to here.
To where?
Um, probably either up into here or over in here, depending on how they, they start. They, they've purchased most of the land in that area. Um, and then everybody else that we've talked to, kind of everyone here is kind of all residentially in nature. Again, staff has no strong feelings on this one. I mean, the, the planner side of me says connectivity is important. And then, I guess, almost like the pragmatic side says it can happen somewhere else. Um, but then I also, that same side probably is like, but then connectivity is really important, so I, it's really up to y'all what you wanna do on this one.
I still think we should remove it personally.
I'm for taking it out.
About to remove? So, okay.
Rob's points are a hundred percent, you're right on, but I think the way that's gonna be developed.
Right, we're not giving up the existing right of way that's there, that little piece. So, that kind of preserves something, right? I mean.
Well, that's gonna be the next thing that I was gonna recommend doing to you. If you're gonna recommend removing it, I recommend abandoning that easement and I, you know, if the town, I need to do some research to see if it's an easement on both sides. It may just be a strip of the land that town owns, but it could be a strip of land that the town puts on the market for somebody to buy. the town puts on the market for somebody to buy as well.
I'm not sure that's a good idea. I mean, you can get an L42 down there, for example. Why give up something that we've got? I mean, that doesn't...
It has a value.
We're making the decision we're not going to use it by removing it. I think we've kind of made this decision, it's not going to happen, and if it is going to happen through the redevelopment development process, we can go and obtain one that's correct, you know, through that process.
Or you make the developer pay for us to abandon that right-of-way.
I wish it worked kind of that easement, and it's not right-of-way, it's an easement.
Okay.
So the person, well, the one strip, I think, we may own the land.
According to IMAX, we own $5,000 worth of prime land right there, that's four feet wide, it looks like.
Yeah, so this, this little piece here, it says strip dedicated to...
Yeah, you're right, it does say four-foot access strip dedicated to.
And this one here is a utility easement and some strip owned by the town, so in theory, I guess we own both of them, I don't know why. We can own them forever. I mean, if we go and do some search, and that could be the thing, figure out whether it's ownership or easement. If it's easement, you know, abandon the easement and let the person have full use, not that it's probably will have first use, because there's a utility going through there, but you get rid of some odd easement that really has no ability to do anything. And now, if it's actually land, you know, then you can have that actually as a counsel to consider selling the property. Most likely, the people next to it would buy it, but...
Yeah, it certainly looks like somebody's already using it if you overlay, if you look on IMAX.
That happens a lot, we have little random...
It looks like someone's driveway and garage might even be on the edge of it.
Chicken coop, it's a ass chicken coop.
It may possibly have been to supply water years ago.
But then you have the 20-foot utility easement there.
Well, I don't know.
That it technically is running with, it's, it's not logical. I, I, and I have found paperwork that goes back to, I want to say it was in the 80s recently, related specifically to this and decided, trying to decide whether or not to keep it. So this conversation has been taking place for a really long period of time.
This was the same era that got the, that people didn't know whether the Hindu Society had actually paid their 25,000, or whatever the number was, for the road, right? The same era of record-keeping that...
Even before that. So this easement's from the 70s.
1975.
I think it was 76 or something like that.
1975.
So...
Okay, move on.
So any particular direction with regards to an action statement on this one, other than just remove it? Y'all just want to leave everything as is? That is not my recommendation, but if that is what you desire, it can stay that way.
Remove it and not mess in the transportation plan with easements and rights of way and ownership.
Yes, do what you want with easements.
Okay, so moving on to Mellicent Way. So this is the one where we received public comments all over the place. So, one person lives next to it, says, I bought it knowing there was going to be a road there, I don't want to green them right there, I'd rather be a road.
Yes, that's the key.
Now, to me, the logic says they don't think the real estate sidewalk goes with that, but I don't know that for a fact. But here's a little, some fun facts for you to consider. So, right here is dedicated right-of-way, in the orange, yellow box, depending on what color it's coming up. And that's all dedicated, but there is no road that's been built. Then we have this little red portion here, that is in Wake County, it's not in our jurisdiction, and that, there is no dedication of right-of-way there. And then we get up to Little Drive. And then we have the greenway that's been built recently, and it is on the north side of Little, it's not on the south side of Little. So we have a couple of options. We can leave it as a road connection. Just understand that we'll ultimately have to obtain additional right-of-way. We can change it to a greenway. If it is a greenway, understand it would be a mid-block crossing, and they are not typically the safest, and Little Drive is going to change dramatically, once some extensions are put in. So those are kind of some food for thoughts. So do we want to keep it, modify it, remove it? And I'm kind of going to toss another one out there, is really study it further to see, you know, is it really needed? This may be one that's maybe beneficial to emergency services, so we...
Especially if they ever build that Morse, the RTP Fire Department, whatever.
That we own land on Little and Lewis Stevens, I believe it is. But there was an entire fire station study, and I don't know where all the parts necessarily So this is one of those ones where, you know, my initial gut reaction is we need way more information before we can say it's not going to be a road.
Yeah.
I agree, because this was sharing.
And that's really going to be the crux of an action, is to get down and get that really important data, that's really not on this huge scale that we've been looking at stuff, but on a much more finite scale. But really, it's up to y'all as to what you want to do.
When, when Pulte built Breckenridge, I was on the board, and we made this a right-of-way. They didn't want to build a road, because Little Drive didn't exist, I don't think it was even contemplated back then. And they said, you know, where would it go to? And we just said, we need to have some connectivity towards RTP. So they left it in as a right-of-way for a road, and we all acknowledged the fact that, yeah, the, the topography was lousy, but it's there for a road, so, you know, there was a method to the madness way back.
So is that one vote for a road, or one for further study?
I think the further study is the safest way.
Further study.
Okay.
Because I mean, I lived in Breckenridge at the time, I was one of the first, like, 20 people that bought in there, and I do remember that was going to be a road, it was always going to be a road. Everyone who bought in there has every right to expect that it would be a road, and, I mean, that's just...
Okay, so we'll figure out how we're going to address it in the plan, how it's going to be labeled, it may end up getting its own special category, but definitely, action plan would be further study. Okay, so now Stockton Gorge Extension. We received no public comments on this one, and this is actually, depending how 147 ends up, could be a potential connection.
This Kids Creek area?
Uh, this is Grace Park's subdivision.
Grace Park?
Grace Point?
Grace Point?
Oh, that, yeah.
Grace Point. It's late, I'm drawing a blank. It's the Grace Point subdivision.
It's the townhomes, and this little section of the townhomes down by the power...
Yeah, so this is Providence Place here.
Yeah.
Church Street Park, Hamilton Park, Grace Point subdivision, and Providence Place. So there is actually right-of-way that was dedicated for this project, but there's not actually any road constructed with it. Just the land was set aside in here, you can see the edge of what could be 147 extension. I think this one kind of falls into a decision may need to be made definitively, you know, put it on as a road, 147 heads a different direction, the action steps in there to take it off of a road, because it's really no longer needed at that point, and then maybe even go and abandon the right-of-way at that point, goes back to the HOA. That would be, I think, a reasonable action.
Yep.
Did you say that there was no public comment on it?
No public comment.
And so all that area around is RTP, right? So there's little chance that anything around there is going to be subdivisions in the future?
I don't think we can say that anymore, the way RTP is going.
Well, that's about it, that's true.
Well, it's right near, I mean, to give you an idea, I mean, it's right near where the interchange is.
Well, I mean, it has like stubs.
It's either going to kind of come this way, or it's going to come this way. And most of the right-of-way, I know it's kind of hard to see here because of the way I cut the map, but if you were to go look at a map, you will see right-of-way is either dedicated, or it looks like it's going to occur for a road.
Yeah, but I mean, like, so Suffolk Green kind of goes down in stubs, right? I mean, so is the idea that this would connect to something in RTP, or would RTP maybe sell this off now that they're cut off by 147?
The idea was it would ultimately connect to 147 when it was dedicated.
You can see there's still land there that can be developed, and this would service potentially a very, very large section of that northwestern Church Street area to connect to 147 if we did choose to use it that way.
Correct. I mean, it'd be one of the ones that'd be beneficial to Providence Place, it'd be beneficial to this development as well.
They can't get to, what, 54 very easily anymore?
Yeah, I mean, currently, like, if you think of the Kids Creek neighborhood, they can cut over to Davis.
Yep.
You know, they have that option. For these people, they have to either go up through Kids Creek or go down to McCrimmon and over. So, depending on how this works out, this could be another, although limited, another point to kind of get east-west for the neighborhood.
And I guess because if you were to do the new way of connecting it to Little Drive, then that would be this other road, would it be like connecting into 147 per se?
And then it may not be needed at all.
Well, but it may be better for them, because they wouldn't be connecting to a high, because you're not going to get a connection to the highway if it's, if it comes straight through there, I wouldn't think, right?
There was one further north, through Mason Farm, through Providence Place, and we know that one would definitely be out, even though it was kind of planned that way, just the way the interchange would work and the speeds, but you could slow it down enough that this one could work.
Right.
But we don't have enough information to know it's, it would ever work.
So it's a keep.
On to Odyssey Drive Extension. We did not receive any comments on this one, portion of it's currently built and dedicated, and it's off a Transera Drive. Do you want to modify it, keep it, remove it, bring back additional information?
I think that's a keep.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay, I know where that is.
Okay, so we have plowed to that, and so every single extension you provided an answer on, except for one that you needed more additional information, so that was awesome, and I think we did it like in 20 minutes. So, thank you.
We, we kicked the biggest can down the road, though, didn't we?
You know, I don't know, you're, you're asking for additional analysis of the data, so I don't think you kicked it anywhere.
Okay.
So that's, so the public comment portal. So how do you get there, and yes, it still is open? So, on the front page of the website, we have a transportation plan update link. I have not, the new webpage is going to go live probably in the new year soon, I don't know what that's going to look like, but we will make sure it still gets kind of front and center on that new webpage. Or if you just want to go directly to the transportation plan update page, it's townmorsville.org/transportationplannedupdate, and you can enter your comments directly there. And this portal is not going to shut, we're going to continue to keep it open. So what about some future opportunities? So we are going to host probably two open houses. We have not figured out those dates, a lot of it based on when we get the plan to use, if the plan is not able to come to y'all in February for some reason, we'll kind of push it out further, but there's going to be an open house when the draft plan's in front of the, this board, as well as when the draft plan's in front of Town Council. Open house is not necessarily to fee, get, receive feedback, but it's to provide basic answers to questions. We're going to open up another public comment session in front of this board on the new draft plan. And we'll can see how long, how many meetings that, you know, proceeds to take place at. And then the public hearing will hold in front of the Town Council, again, undetermined date, but those are some future opportunities. And then, do you have any questions or comments at this point? And you can't, because I officially ran out of paper.
I can't say I'm thrilled at the opportunity to have another public comment.
That means everyone gets to talk again, right?
Yes, sir.
Again and again, or a third time.
Hey, maybe we could all come in the same colored tops.
I mean, remember, you have the ability to say that if there is one opinion on one matter, it can be limited to 20 minutes.
I definitely...
You know, for the, if there's a pro and a con, you can limit, I mean, you could control.
Yep.
You have that within your purview to do that as a chair.
Yeah, I, I think we would need to do that, because there was no need, really, to go through what we went through the last meeting.
Other than...
Everybody deserves an opportunity to speak.
Yes, yes.
But we've been inclusive, now we can be brief.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I think it was, it would have been as effective for one speaker to have gotten up, and everybody, anyway, we'll manage that a little bit better.
Okay.
That's my New Year's resolution.
Is it going to keep, or is it aspirational? I mean, that's, mine typically are, but...
Is that like my gym membership?
I think it's desperation.
Okay, so any other questions or comments? And I appreciate you kind of sitting through what was a very long bit of information, but we've really got a lot of feedback, so I'm, thank you.
I would just like to make one comment, I think. There's been some correspondence that kind of questions why we had the Crabtree Crossing extension in the plan, and, you know, I gave that some, a little bit of thought, and I think anybody, any outside entity taking a look at the 30,000-foot view would have said, you need to look at whether that is feasible or not. And I think that the statement about it was removed in the 2009 transportation plan, so what? I mean, I think if we always continued the same assumptions, we have a plan that wouldn't change. So I think it was quite right to reopen that. I know it was a can of worms, but I think it was very appropriate to look at that, and I don't think any one department or consultant or individual should be held to, their feet to the fire because that, that's there. If nobody else had raised it, I think I would have said we need to at least consider it. I'm not saying I'm in favor of it, but we should definitely have considered it, so just wanted to make that comment.
Okay, thank you. So we are going to now get down to, oh, sorry, we have vice chair appointments, I am this glazed right over that one. So I brought it back, as many of you are aware, Craig Gross did resign from the board, and as a result, he was nominated for vice chair. At this point, we have his vacant seat, we also have an ETJ vacant seat. If I can kind of just entertain y'all for a second of kind of where, if I had a desire of where to go. So now that we have a vacant seat, they are looking to appoint, and the first level appointments typically is the alternates, and that, one of those alternates traditionally will fill, you know, the vacant seat. So then that would give an opportunity, hopefully, for either Mr. Taylor or Mr. Langson to fill that seat, which would then be another person who could potentially want to be a chair. You know, at the same time, we have somebody here that may want to fill the role of vice chair, because really, we have two people that can fill it right now, and that is Dr. Cool and I'm Miss Botha. Y'all both can go ahead and fill it. So if it's something that you're interested in, you know, you can toss your hat into the vice chair, or if you're not interested in it, we can pause, we can wait, and wait until there's other appointments, because we may end up, end up filling the ETJ chair as well, ultimately. And they can also represent, or fill the chair or vice chair roles. So, my question is, what would you like to do? We can kind of table this until after we have appointments, which would put us at the February meeting. It doesn't put us at any jeopardy, you know, if Peter's sick one evening, you can vote to who's going to fill his role. So meetings can continue to run smoothly. So I'm open to whatever you would like to do.
Yeah, I think, you know, there's a procedure in place, if neither the chair nor the vice chair is here, then you just elect whoever's going to chair that meeting, so that's perfectly I honestly forget how long I've been on the board, but I know I was appointed chairperson back in 19, sorry, 2001, and I've missed one meeting since then, so...
And been like once?
Yes, yeah, really bad. But, so I think with, with luck, I'd drag myself in, so, but that's just a side.
Well, I would be interested, but I think I'd want to wait until Benny was here, until whatever appointments took place, who, you know, until there was a full board.
Yeah.
Until everything was in place, you know?
The vice chairperson would then have, you know, more kind of authority, because it would have been a full board.
Well, you know, it would be inclusive, I think everybody should be included in something like that.
That's, that's gracious of you. That's good. What do you think, Rob?
I think, if that's how you feel, I think we should table it, delay, being the only eligible person here today.
Okay, then, I think there's kind of three that would want to head that direction, and we can do that. I just really wanted people who are eligible to have, I really want y'all's blessing, or just your blessing in this case, since some other person left, before we moved forward. So thank you for allowing me the opportunity to try to work with council, because really, council works for themselves to get the position filled. So moving on now to the November newsletter. moving on now to the November newsletter. So the activities in November, so Park West Village, R16, the site plan for that was submitted. And I believe that's the re, is that our Gander Mountain?
It is.
Yeah, so Gander Mountain's gonna become multiple tenants. So they're changing that into a multi-use, multi-tenant building. So there's several changes to the exterior as well as the interior that need to occur for that to happen.
It seemed like a big space to try to fill with one, so.
Yeah, it's, multiple tenants are going in there. And then, construction plan, so Parkside Elementary, the driveway cut on Parkside Valley Drive, that has been submitted to the town. And then we had a couple approvals. Perimeter Six was a site plan and construction modification was approved. The alternative landscape plan for Wilson Place, which you saw tonight, that was also approved. And Triangle Badminton, that was approved. And they are going in the Old Capri Flavors Building. So they're putting a Badminton facility in there.
Capri Flavors is not in that building anymore?
They may still actually physically be in the building. And I know they're trying to find kind of another location, but they sold off that location.
Yeah, because the Badminton was over in Perimeter Park, right, somewhere?
I know there's a tennis, table tennis was sold.
Oh, oh, Badminton. Yeah, you're right. That's table tennis. Yeah, sorry.
So, but yes. Then council had a couple different approvals. There was a land use plan amendment, as well as associated rezoning and annexation for the Wells parcel that was located there on Fairbanks Drive. And, but it had an address of Zero Wilson. And then the Morrisville Waste Transfer Station, that was also annexed. And just in the other news, we just kind of keep updated on our transportation plan updates. That is all we have for that. Whoops, I'll get back there eventually. Now, it's on to board member comments.
It's got on this side. Rob?
No comments.
Me?
Nothing.
Nothing from me. Wow. Okay. Item 14, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.